We're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, but first let's do the roll call. Madam Clerk, please.
Council, where am I at? Councilmember Baldino?
Here.
Councilmember Giroux?
Here.
Councilmember Persnick?
Here.
Mayor Potem Pimentel?
Here.
Mayor Boiles?
Here. All right. We're going to have the invocation led by Pastor Rob McKenna. If you could all please rise of the Bridge Church.
Always an honor to be able to pray over this. And it just literally dawned on me. I've been doing this for 22 years. And so don't take it lightly. Let's pray. Lord, we're so grateful tonight and reminded tonight as well, as we were heading into Easter week, Lord God, that you are a good God. And Lord, that you watch over our city, that you keep it safe, Lord. And Lord, I pray tonight, as I always pray, that you would watch over our leaders. In fact, your word tells us to pray for our leaders, those in government. So tonight, we do that. We pray that you would give them wisdom and discernment as they process the decisions for our city. And Lord God, we're thankful for them. We're thankful for their service. We pray that you would bless them and bless their families. And Lord, we also give you thanks for all those that serve in our city, Lord God, our police officers, firefighters, schoolteachers, the administrators, Lord God, those that serve our city and keeping it clean and taking care of it, Lord God. And so we give thanks for those things. And Lord, tonight, I pray for families. I pray that you just continue to bless the families in the community of El Segundo, that you watch over them as well, that you keep them safe as you keep our city safe. And so, Lord, we give thanks and we give you praise. We pray this in your name. Amen. To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Persnick. Thank you, Pastor McKenna of the Bridge Church. Appreciate it. We've got several special presentations this night. First one is the, this is a great one, Commendation for Certified Green Businesses. And I believe Tracy Miller-Zarniky, are you here? Yeah, our environmental chair is here, as well as Elias Sassoon, Director of Public Works. Would you like to join the podium? Or yeah, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am happy to be here tonight. Nice to see you all. I'm really pleased that the City of El Segundo agreed to implement our town's participation in the California Green Business Network, which launched here in Earth Week 2022. This launch was made possible by some persistent lobbying by the Environmental Committee, as well as an application for a grant from the state by our own Public Works Department, under the leadership of Elias Sassoon. I think $60,000 was the tune of that grant. And this all was able to happen through the management of the South Bay Cog, particularly Martha Segovia, Dakota Townsend, over here tonight, and their team for these last two years. Let's take a moment, though, and watch a short video piece that our own El Segundo media team produced on this program, so everybody knows what we're talking about, and less for me. The California Green Business Network is a longstanding program in California, and it basically acknowledges and rewards businesses that are eco-friendly. Businesses that are interested can have a consultant come in, look at what you're doing, and say, you know, you could save energy doing this, or save water doing this, or get rid of your one-time-use plastic. Anything like that is a step on the path to being accepted and certified into the Green Business Network. And we just wanted to make El Segundo a place where people would be acknowledging their green efforts. This is a way that we can make small changes that add up to something great. The range of businesses that can participate is infinite. It could be an office. It could be a yoga studio. It could be a coffee shop. There are so many ways that every business can take some steps to being greener, and with this program, they get recognized for it. There's no cost to being a part of the Green Business Network. The program itself brings in a consultant to show you how you can be greener. And then when you make those changes, a lot of times, you're not only feeling good about your green changes, but you're saving money. That is key for a lot of businesses, especially in today's world.
The way we treat the earth is really important to me. I have children. Children are a big population that we serve here, so I deeply care about the earth that we're going to leave to the next generation. We don't use any harsh chemicals. We use bamboo toilet paper. We don't use trash bags in our trash cans. We recycle. We also have a low-pressure sink in, you know, the water system in our bathroom. We don't use paper towels, so we, you know, wash our reusable towels for hand washing. You know, for light, we have shades, so that keeps it cool in the morning for the morning sun. And we close our skylight. And in terms of air, we have really great airflow, so we just kind of open the doors, and this way, it minimizes the air conditioning and the electricity that we're using.
Process isn't hard at all, and I think it's really important that we do our part to be in business today, and having the program, being a part of the program is important. And I think it's interesting to see how green we really are and what areas that we could improve on. And I was just very impressed, and it was very easy, very easy to get green certified. The cleaning products that we use, the light voltage that we use, the type of lights that we use, recycling is really important. I mean, we do generate a lot of trash, so that's a very important thing. I would just encourage our neighbors along the street to participate and just do the right thing.
There's no reason not to do it. If you have any questions, the process is so easy, and the representatives are very available, very responsive, very willing to help.
We invite businesses to keep applying to this program. We have information on the city website that they can look up through our environmental resources page. And, you know, this is done in cooperation with the South Bay City Councils of Governments, so that program has this in most of our South Bay already. So even if you have a friend who's in another community, they could do it there. But all the information you need is on our website, or you can talk to Public Works at any time. Okay, well, I thought there'd be less of me talking. I forgot how much I'm in that. Anyway, the most important part of this program are the businesses that put in the effort to seek certification, but mostly to be greener. So tonight, we are pleased to recognize some of them. We'll see who's here, but as we get down the list, I do want to read out everyone that applied and has certified, because it's important to recognize their effort. Again, they are here, recognized for the fact that they contribute to our immediate community benefit, not only in the services offered, but in making us a more sustainable town. They adopt eco-friendly practices and protocols. They show others that this is both viable as a business and, you know, you can profit and be green at the same time. There's a misnomer that some people think that's not possible, but they are here to show us it is. So what I'd like to do now is I'll read each business's name, and if anyone is here, I can't tell with our busy room how many people are here for this, I would love you to come up to the front. I hope you don't mind doing a photo at the end. Yeah? Okay, great. So I'm going to read through the list and see who's here. Come on up if I call your name. Do you want to, sorry, I can't, I can't read and hand them out at the same time. So we have on our list of certified businesses, the Astero Group, Berry's, Bikorama, Kalaros Dental, Champion Vibes, the City of El Segundo City Hall, Coast Nails, Code Ninjas of El Segundo, David and Goliath LLC, the Edwards T. Little Water Recycling Center, which I know West Basin, we have a couple of representatives here tonight, including Scott Houston, the El Segundo Chamber of Commerce, our fire stations, one and two, our maintenance facility, our police department, our water operations, Ellis Law Corporation, Family Wellness Studio, Federal Realty, Hammer and Nails Grooming, Jing Spa, Kilroy Realty Corporation, Luther Burbank Savings, Mano del Sur, Miracle Smile Dentistry, Nike Incorporated, One Medical, Orange Theory Fitness, Orange Twist South Bay, Scooter's Jungle, Simply Nail Bar, Soul Cycle, Square Enix Incorporated, Stretch Lab, Sylvan Learning, and The Jewelry Source. So wow, look at who's here. So I also want to make sure our environmental committee members come up, too. So Kevin and Dennis, can you guys come up and join us for this? Martha, you should be in this picture. Dakota, you should be in this picture. We can hand out certificates after if we're missing anybody now, so. Squishing in, squishing in. Yep. Dakota, you're going to be in here. Okay. All right.
And yeah, there we go. Somebody may be over there. There we go. Somebody over there. I just want to make sure I see everybody's face. Sorry about that. And anybody that wants to take a picture, you're free to do it. And if you want to do it first, that's fine also. Okay, sure, sure. Great, great, excellent. Mr. Sassoon, a little backwards. Okay, we have everybody? Okay, this is going to be a bit challenging, but I think we can get everybody. So I'm going to take the pictures first, and then if everybody wants to come up, and then you can take all the pictures in the world. Here we go. One, two, and a couple more, a couple more. Make sure we don't have little blinks and stuff. And now, if you stay there, we have folks that call you friends.
Yes. Thank you all for coming.
Tracy.
Oh, that's Elias's.
All right, real quick, Mrs. Zarniky, I just thank you very much. Mr. Sassoon, thank you very much. South Bay City Council Government's great leadership. The fact that we have 31 businesses in El Segundo that are now certified green is incredible. Great work. Tracy, you've been advocating for so much on the school board, the environmental committee, single-use plastics, now this. Thank you for everything you're doing to make our city so great, continue to be even greater. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I also would like to thank Chamber of Commerce. Marsha provided extensive support, and I want to thank her for all her time.
Where is Marsha? You're the best. Let's give it up for Marsha, too. You know you want the microphone. She's the best on the mic, always. Okay, anyway. All right, that was awkward. All right, next up, we're going to go to Councilmember Carol Persnick.
Yes, we have a proclamation. Whereas United States Government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and Peace Over Violence has declared April 24, 2024, as Denim Day in Los Angeles County, and whereas both events are intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence remains a serious issue in our society, and whereas more than 20 years ago, a 40-year-old driving instructor was convicted of sexually assaulting a teenage girl in Italy, the Italian Supreme Court overturned that conviction based on the legal theory that the girl must have consented to the assault because she was wearing tight jeans. And her tight jeans could only have been removed if she consented to sex. And whereas harmful attitudes about sexual violence allow these issues to persist and allow victim survivors to be revictimized, and whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day were also instituted to call attention to the misconceptions and misinformation about sexual violence, and the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of sexual harassment, assault, abuse, and rape. And whereas with proper education on the matter and the comprehensive prevention projects, sexual violence and its unfair and traumatizing effects are preventable. And whereas the members of the City Council strongly support the efforts of peace over violence to educate our community about the true impact of sexual harassment, abuse, assault, and rape in Southern California. And now, therefore, the mayor and members of the City Council of El Segundo, California, do by proclaim the month of April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and designates April 24, 2024, as Denim Day, and urges everyone to wear jeans on April 24 to help communicate the message that there is no excuse and never invitation to harass, abuse, assault, or rape.
Thank you very much.
There's no way.
No, I don't think anyone's here to accept that, but thank you very much, Councilmember Persnick. Really appreciate that. All right, now, we've got a bittersweet announcement. We've got the recognition of Chief Jaime Bermudez, who's retiring, and it's hard to believe he's been with us for so long. We've got a video to play, and I think we're going to start there, Chief, if that's okay with you. We're going to start with this video. And this video is, I believe, a reflection of the last 32 years of his life committed to serving the citizens of El Segundo. So let's play the video.
Well, it's been a great, it's been a great run for me, you know, starting here back in the 90s and then ending up as chief has been a great honor for me. Leading these men and women of the El Segundo Police Department has been fantastic for me and my family. And, you know, as I come to the end here, it's bittersweet, but I loved every minute of it. El Segundo will always have a special place in my heart. You know, I started here when I was so young, and this community has been very supportive, the City Council, the other department heads, and all of my coworkers have been fantastic. So my only word is to, you know, appreciate every day, and I'm looking forward to retirement, and I'm going to look back and always smile at my days here at El Segundo PD.
We have some plaques and recognitions, but I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues to say a few words before we get to that.
Happy to go first. Where is he? Chief, I think I've been pretty open about my admiration of you, and I think what you have done with this department has really kind of set the standard really high. Your professionalism, your openness, your willing to think through problems and come to solutions has been tremendous, and I am thankful for the short time we had together, and I wish you nothing but the best in your retirement, sir.
Thank you.
I wish we could pull that picture up of when you were like 18. But, you know, I keep hearing how difficult the job police chief is, but has there ever been anyone in history who has aged as gracefully in this position as this man has? Again, you've set a standard that's going to be very difficult for the ones that come behind you to fill. You have been a great representative of this city for a very, very long time. I truly appreciate everything that you've done, and I really wish you well on your retirement. You will be missed.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I echo the same sentiments. I mean, you've been a great, great chief, someone to, we could go to, very responsive, and your professionalism is above par. So just thank you for everything you've done for the community and for the department. I know you will be definitely missed, and I know you'll come back every once in a while for that special punch that the police officers put together when there's a promotion. But thank you for everything you've done, and we really wish you a wonderful retirement, you and your family.
Thank you.
Chief, there's a bit of a truism with policing, that anytime you talk with the police, you're having a bad day. And I think your temperament has made that a lie for this town. I think the fact that you have at every level engaged the community in a way that they like seeing the police, they trust the police, and the police are a part of our social fabric in that they are not someone who shows up when you're just having a really bad day. That is a direct reflection of your leadership, and I think your demeanor through the ups and downs and vagaries of the job, the steadfast demeanor that you have is a credit to yourself and a credit to the police department. I thank you for it.
Thank you.
Chief, we're going to miss you. You've been creative. When we've asked you to look at new technologies, ways to invent the police department, you've been open-minded. You've implemented great technologies to help support them. You came to us with an incredible recruitment bonus for your team to bring new members on and to fill the ranks. You've been absolutely steadfast in your commitment to serve and protect. You've been a humble leader, a great servant to your team, and we've really appreciated working with you. We're going to miss you. I say that genuinely. I'm going to miss you, and I'm sure you'll be back around at some point. We hope so.
Thank you.
And don't go back to work too quickly. I know, you know, you got your retirement and stuff, but take it easy, relax, enjoy yourself. And thank you very much for your service.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. So we have, do you want to present this plaque? Yeah, okay, I'll do it. I'm going to come to you, and then we've got something from the LA County Sheriff's Department. Do we have a representative from the County Sheriff's Department? No? Okay, I'll present that. I know we've got Jesslyn Waldron from Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office. And is Alina Wilbro here? I know she was not feeling too well. She was in a conference call earlier today. Okay, so I'm going to present this, and then we'll turn it over to Jess. Okay, so I'm going to present this, and then we'll turn it over to Jesslyn. Okay.
All right, great. I doubt it. I doubt it. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
This one is recognition of 32 years of dedicated service to law enforcement. Throughout your career, you gave selfless lead to enhance upon the life of your residents within the community you serve, which reflects admirably on your department and view as an individual. Your outstanding efforts and contributions in every rank are countless and a testament to your distinguished character and commitment to excellence, which is truly worthy of admiration and praise. Men and women of the LA County Sheriff's Department, join me in congratulating you on your retirement and wishing you well in your future endeavors. I'm Robert. I'm a sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Boyle. Chief Bermudez, Supervisor Mitchell, sent me a thank you for your 32 years of service to El Segundo and LA County. Just one quick anecdote about Chief Bermudez and working with our office. We had some questions about some of the services that you all provide in El Segundo, and you opened your office to us. You're so warm and welcoming and helped give us so much information. I told my staff you're retiring. They're like, "No." It was so nice. So, yeah, thank you for that relationship with our office, and I know you have overcome at your, our City Council here, some challenges and some labor shortages, especially that law enforcement is kind of going through right now. You've been creative in solving that when you drive down to Pulvada and see El Segundo Police Station retiring. Now, I'm like, "I'm not here." So, anyway, congratulations. Your impact in this community is definitely going to be felt way beyond your service here. So, behalf of Supervisor Holly Mitchell, congratulations on your service to El Segundo and LA County.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Here we go, guys. Everybody looks great. All right, here we go. And there's one, two, and one more. Did your other leadership want to come up? Take a picture? There's a lot of bars here. Very good. Okay. Okay, gentlemen and ladies. And one more. Thank you so much.
I'm just going to say a few words because I don't want to get emotional, and chiefs don't cry. So as I was driving into work this morning, every day as I get closer and closer to the end of the month, I can't believe that it's coming down to just a couple of days. But I'm super excited for me and my family to be retiring, and I do want to thank you, all of you on the council, for always supporting the police department and for supporting me and for supporting the men and women that do this job. I'm the chief, but I couldn't do my job without our workers, and we're very fortunate to have them here in the community. When I go down to briefings, when I go down to supervisors' meetings, which we have every other month, I talk about our goals, and I talk about my expectations, and I talk about the things that we need to do in the community. And the genuine interest and care that these men and women have for the city of El Segundo is incredible. They go down and they know what they have to do to keep our community safe, even during these challenging times. And for me as a chief, they make it easy for me. I tell them what I want them to do, I tell them what's important to me and what's important to the community, and they go out and do it. And we're very fortunate to have that. Not every community has that type of police service. And so my hat's off to them and for everything that they do for the police department. The other thing I do want to thank is the community. When I came on as chief, there were a couple of things that were very important to me, and service, professionalism, and mission. And I went down to our department and I said, "These are things that I'm going to emphasize for as long as I'm chief." Service, we're going to provide unparalleled service, professionalism in everything that we do. And that's not only within our walls but out in the community. That's very important to me. And then the mission. I need everyone on the department to understand our mission. And I think right now, if you go to the police department, whether you talk to a cadet or whether you talk to one of my captains, everyone understands the mission as set out by me when I became chief. And that's the sign of a healthy organization when every rank within the organization understands what's important. And they've done a fantastic job. And it's days like today that I see it in the community that our work is paying off because as now the chief retiring, I've had so many people come up to me and say, "We're going to miss you. The police department is great." And so those are all credit to our officers and what they do in the community. So thank you very much to all of you, to our residents. I'm definitely going to miss everyone, but I'm local. I'm in Redondo Beach, so I'll be around visiting the police department. And thank you to the department heads, and thank you, Daryl, for everything you do. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief. He really hasn't aged. I wish I could say the same, you know, the job in the city, tell you what. All right, thank you very much. Public Communications, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone that would like to speak outside of the public hearing item?
No, currently I just have speakers for the public hearing.
Okay, so for the public hearing, we will hear those comments.
Twenty-two of them.
Quite a few of them?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two comments related to the parking item.
Item number 11.
Yeah, number 11. Thank you. So I'm trying to think if we need to move that up or is that front and center? Let's see here. Yeah, we'll move that before the block grant one at the very least, if everyone's okay with that on the council. Yep. Okay, if we have no public comments, City Manager, anything that you want to report on now that we have a full... Do you want to maybe talk about the recent conversations we've had with the city of LA?
If you'd like me to do the Hyperion comments now, I'd be happy to.
Yes, please.
Okay. Yes, Mayor and Council, I will follow up on our meeting, our all-hands meeting yesterday. Just a little background, as you know, following the pretty intense storms last month, there was a significant uptick in odors emanating from the Hyperion treatment plant that continued on for several weeks, really causing us and you, the mayor and the council, to direct a letter to Los Angeles Mayor Karen Bass's office recommending or suggesting significant changes in upper management and also the way that the plant is being managed. That letter certainly generated a lot of feedback, a lot of back and forth between El Segundo and Los Angeles, to the point yesterday morning where we had an all-hands meeting with ourselves, members of the council, myself, our Public Works Director, our Environmental Committee Chair. Meeting was also attended by Mayor Bass's Director of Public Works, Ryan Jackson. There were two representatives from the Sanitation District, senior leadership, including the general manager, representatives from LA City Council Districts 5 and 11, LA County Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office, and OJeslin attended, along with Assembly Member Alma Rissucci's office, Congressman Ted Lieu's office, and Senator Ben Allen's office. So we had a pretty significant showing of legislative leaders all dealing with the same issue, Hyperion. During the meeting, we continued to express our concerns of the odors emanating from the plant and what was being done, and the city of Los Angeles provided an update on the status of the plant, what happened during the historic rainfall last month, and why they feel that caused a number of the odor problems emanating from the plant. They discussed a number of the 33 recommendations, several of those recommendations and the status of where they were. They also provided a, they provided really a strategy or a game plan that they felt would really look at the issues of management at the facility, so much so that they started to talk about organizational changes that they will put in place over the next several months that would focus on external affairs, government relations, employee engagement, and regulatory compliance. The main emphasis of this organizational change was really in creating this new division manager position, an expert in the field that would really lead a team of reorganized 30 members of the staff there that would deal with a number of the hard-hitting issues that we feel are necessary to turn things around at the plant. These changes are being, will be reflected in Mayor Bass's budget that will be scheduled to go to the LA City Council next month because there are certain budget implications that will need to be made, but she feels strongly that those will be approved. Another key component of what they're proposing that we've been advocating for now for quite some time is their desire now to actually seek outside experts in the field, whatever that may be, rather than relying on their own staff, seeking outside experts that they could get advice and feedback on in certain areas. Another important piece that I thought was significant that they were going to share the job description for this position with us, with our city staff, so that we can provide input into the job description and even potentially sit on the interview panel for the position They have been, I think this was an extremely responsive meeting from them, from the electeds, really taking to heart what we asked for in the letter. I'm hoping for some positive change. We will certainly keep track of where these measures go and how we will, again, be involved in hopefully making some changes in the organizational structure over at the plant. Really, that was the key issues discussed during the little over an hour, hour-and-a-half meeting. I know a couple of you were on the discussions, and anything else to add? But at this point, it's...
Yeah, I do. So beyond the management, maintenance, repair, and capital improvement projects that they're working on, one of the key things we've been, we were pushing is transparency on information. So there is a mindset change that needs to happen at the facility, which they agreed that they admitted that needs to happen. Everything they do is reactionary, so the critical threshold of a marker when something is, like, when gases are on an eptic, is at a level that is already beyond our expectation. So they're going to try to lower those triggers and be a little more proactive in their approach and so that they notify people before we have to notify them. In addition to that, and the notification piece is what's key, is the LA County Health Department has a role in this, and one of the things we've asked for is their communication process flow with the LA County Health, because I believe that there's some, you know, communication overlaps, that there's some misdrops of communication. So we're going to vet that communication process flow with Jesslyn and the Holly Mitchell's Department and look at, see where we can fine-tune that so the community receives information at a much faster turnaround time and that there's a much more proactive approach in the communication. So not only for just the community, but also in the beaches. And so that notification for the beach, you know, if there's issues where there's dumpage going into this ocean, that people going into the water notified earlier than later. And so that's the two... So we really were focusing on transparency and just ensuring that the communication flow process, we have an understanding of, and so that we can focus that and fine-tune that.
Overall, they've made some promises of leadership change. They have pointed to some areas where they can make improvements. We are optimistic that with the help of our other elected officials, such as our supervisor, our congressman, which represented our state assembly member, our state senator, we're all in this meeting because we're basically taking them to the principal's office. Explain what is happening, explain how we got to where we are, and tell us how you're going to change and make a positive difference. I believe the creation of this new division, which is going to reorganize 30 staff members within Los Angeles, it's a huge budgetary ask for the city to make, just so they can help communicate what's going on better, just so they can be more concerned about being in regulatory compliance, which is all we want. We want them to be in compliance with their permits so that we don't have any concerns about things going wrong out there. So it was a positive step, but we will continue to advocate. We will continue to verify that they're going to actually follow through on these steps, but the process is moving along, and I'm optimistic that we will soon see some leadership changes and some structural changes with how the plant is operating and help to ensure that we are as transparent as we can be with the folks in town about what is happening over there.
All right, thank you both, and thank you, Mr. George. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on to Item A. Read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Would someone like to move approval?
So moved.
Thank you.
Perstuk, second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five-zero. Any polls for consent?
Correction, to Item 4.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
We need to strike the word unanimous from Item D-10.
Thank you very much. That was a matter, just the vote count. What was the item again, Madam Clerk?
The signs.
The sign.
And I left...
It was 3-2 vote, but it said unanimous.
But I left unanimous in there, yes.
Thank you. All right, noted. With that correction, does your motion in seconds still stand?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five-zero. Okay, we're going to move up to Item 11, which is a public hearing. I know we have about 22 comments at least so far on this matter. So this is a time and place here to fix for a public hearing regarding amending preferential parking zone 3 to add Washington Street from Mariposa Avenue to Holly Avenue. City Clerk, was proper notice given in a timely manner?
It was.
Thank you. Has any written communication been received regarding the public hearing? No? Okay.
Yes, well, in the past, yeah.
Previous meetings. Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Mr. George, who will make the presentation?
Yes, Mayor, our Public Works Director, Elias Sassoon, will make that presentation as soon as he loads the laptop.
So, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. On February 6 of this year's City Council, they approved the... Sorry. On February 6 of 2024, City Council approved a resolution establishing preferential parking zone 3, requiring 24-hour parking permits along Indiana, Illinois, Pine, Holly, and Mariposa. The same resolution established a two-hour vehicle parking restriction along Illinois on the west side and Indiana on the east side. At the City Council direction, staff has agendized this item and is recommending to adopt another resolution to add Washington Street from Mariposa Avenue to Holly Avenue to the preferential parking zone 3 with the same restrictions on both sides of the street. So in order to make it easier and facilitate that, if you would, this is the drawing that shows the petition as was submitted to the city. This is what the City Council approved at its February 6 meeting, as I read, and basically at this time, the city staff is recommending adding Washington Street, which is shown on the middle of this figure, from Mariposa to Holly on both sides to be part of the zone 3 parking restrictions. And at this time, I would like to answer any questions that you may have. And at this time, I would like to answer any questions that that you may have.
Questions only, any comments or conjecture will be saved for after we close the public hearing. Any questions for Mr. George? You like that word, right, conjecture? Okay, uh, let's see. We will close, let's see, a public hearing, okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Oh, sorry, man, I'm really skipping ahead. We didn't, really didn't want to hear from you tonight anyway. Just kidding.
Twenty-two to zero, just like that.
Public hearing is now open for public input. Let's see, we got 22, we'll call them up, and then, can you read two at a time so they know who's up next and keep it going? And then let's limit it to three minutes each, which will, that's going to be an hour. And then if you could make it faster, please do so. And if you hear yourself, your message being repeated, just please pass and say, second what they just said or something, okay? Thank you.
All right, first up Cheryl Smith, behind her, Jason Tayback.
Don't act like you're not ready, Cheryl.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Smith. I live at 416 Kansas Street, and I am here to advocate for Kansas Street being included in the zone three parking permit. We made inquiries when California commit went, permit went in. Then we also submitted the petition for Kansas Street. We got a very high return on that. We were deemed red during the peak periods in the study that was done, and we respectfully request that we be allowed to be included as well because we will be squished between the two petition, between the two parking permit areas. And also, I do know that there were other residences who have submitted written requests and also, yeah, I guess that's it. We really want this. Thank you.
Thank you for being so succinct, appreciate it.
Jason is up, and after Jason is Jim D. Cordova.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Jason Tayback. I live on Washington Street on the 400 block. I've been there since 2009. Here tonight to just ask again that we, that the council amend the resolution to include Washington Street in the original proposal from the city engineers, you know, to include us into the, into this pilot program. I'd like to also just, you know, at this time, make a plea for Kansas as well. Again, as Cheryl said, they're going to be, you know, pushed into the zone now between the two, two parking permit zones. One of the things that went on in the original conversation at the original meeting was that we were just kind of, this proposal would just, would push the parking problems just to other, to other neighborhoods in our city. And since Kansas is so close, it'd be great if they can be included in this pilot program as well. Now, I know that we've got a lot of people who are supposed to talk. I don't want to talk for everybody, but I think that most of the people who are here today are going, you know, want to talk on this issue. So I'm not sure, you know, it's going to be an hour, like you said. I don't want to take time away.
We're hoping for less, but yeah, we've allocated an hour.
So I don't know, just, you know, maybe by a show of hands too, we can just have all the people who are in, you know, in this area who have come tonight to speak, so maybe that'll just save a little bit of the council's time. So, so again, just to sum up, I'm here and a lot of my neighbors are here to, to ask that we amend that, that a resolution to include Washington Street from the original proposal and perhaps even bring Kansas in as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, and after Jim is Pat Curry.
Hi, I'm Jim D. Cordova, 421 Washington Street. With the mayor's request for brevity, I'm one of many voices here to advocate for the inclusion of Washington into zone three as per the engineering study. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Pat Curry, and after him is Ken Wogaman.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Pat Curry at 400 block of Washington Street. As you know, we've had continuous problems with airport parkers, local businesses using our street. We're a pretty tight-knit neighborhood. I know well most of the people here, you know, and I'm advocating for them also because we help each other, and I'm here to try to help and would like to see if we can follow the recommended engineer and city staffs to include us on zone three. We've, I hope you had a look, chance to look at the petitions that we filed, four of them in the last five years. This problem's been going on for eight years. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Ken, and after John Anderson.
Ken Wogaman, I live at 417 Washington. I've lived in El Segundo for 37 years in the same place, and up to the last few years, usually you had no, actually no problem parking. But now between everything else with the company, the businesses, people parking there to go save themselves from parking for the airport and things like that, it makes it important to be able to have people come by your house and actually be able to, not part three blocks away, to come visit you. You know, somebody wants to work on your house, be it plumbing, be it the gardener, anything else, there's a place to park for them. And it's just, it's been a daily problem now for the last several years. And I can't see anything more than anybody else has already said, that's already been said, you know, and it'd be easy just to stop everybody from having to work, come up here and talk by just saying, good go.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. John Anderson, 829 Main Street. I'm here representing my family who owns 401 and 403 Washington Street. There has historically been a parking issue with Washington, not only Washington Street, but Holly as well, which I would, it's not included in the plan, but would like to propose it be added, at least on the north side of Holly between Washington and Kansas. Issue that I, that, concerns that I have are overnight parking, transients in the community, parking there. It's difficult enough for the individuals living at 401 and 403 Washington to find parking impacted by businesses in the area, and I certainly appreciate council proceeding with this plan, but to also include Holly and Kansas.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
All right, up next is Kathy and Jim Woods.
Good evening, Mayor, and everybody else. Standing with all my neighbors, I feel the same way. Nothing to say, just everything that they said. Thank you.
Okay, you just wanted a word. Not that you're not used to that, Kathy, thank you.
After Jim will be Mike.
Mayor Boils, council members, thank you for your time. Just here to support the neighbors to, so Jim Woods, I work with Gray Star, which has partnered with Griffin Capital on the proposed residential development between Washington and Kansas. This is a big problem. We are here to support the proposed parking on Washington as well as along Kansas and to put on record that our proposed project will be excluded from receiving permits. We don't want to worsen the issue. We feel confident that the parking we're proposing will be enough for our residents and our visitors, so we're here to support the initiative. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Hey, guys. This is kind of sad that this is still going on, but good to see you here tonight, Drew. Everybody is all going to comment and say the same thing, there's no parking. Put yourself in our place, go home tonight, not be able to park, wake up in the morning, be a victim of ride share, one of the businesses, local, one of the other companies like Enterprise, you pick. We don't have parking permits. The engineering department has probably had a lot of money spent to come up with this plan. I suggest we go forward with what they've recommended. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. May.
Christian Bravo.
Hello, good evening. Christian Bravo, I live in 416 Washington, and yes, I'm here to say, to repeat what we've been saying and what we said before, there is an issue with parking. I mean, just recently, last week, I actually had to call the police dispatcher because there was a car parked for several days in front of my house. I didn't know who the car belonged to, and issues like that happen all the time. So please follow the recommendation and include Washington as part of the zone three parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bravo.
Joyce Harris, and after Joyce will be Chris King.
My name is Joyce Harris. I've lived on, at 429 Kansas Street for 42 years, and the problem does exist there as well, so I would like Kansas Street to be added to the privileged parking or parking permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Oh, sure, I'm so sorry.
Mayor, council. I'm Christine Colette, and I've lived at my address, 424 Kansas Street, for 69 years. And I'm now disabled, and I have family, friends, occupational therapists, physical therapists, that come to my home during the day, and they have no place to park or they have to park down other streets. Other cars are always parked in front of my house. I know it's not my neighbor's cars because I know what they are, but several times I've witnessed drivers park in front of my house, get out of their cars, walk south on Kansas Street, which I'm assuming going to work on the other side of Grand. On Mondays, when there's street sweeping on the east and west streets, it's even worse because they can't park on east and west, so they park on, well, I'm Kansas Street, so on my Kansas Street. I just want to somehow prevent other cars from parking in front of my house for a long period of time during the day while they're at work. So if they could, or if you could please consider including Kansas Street on that because when we have the development that's happening, it's going to be even worse with cars coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Colette.
Now we'll try Chris King, and then after that will be Danny Firestone.
Thank you, guys, for your time. Appreciate it very much and the consideration. We've been feeling a bit like the redheaded stepchild, so we're hoping that you guys wrap us up in the loving El Segundo arms and allow us to park on our street once again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris King, appreciate it.
Danny Firestone, and after that will be Vola Dixon.
Hello, and thank you. I virtually agree with everything they've said. I would just suggest taking into consideration the massive development. It would be naive to think that that's not going to add to the problem, so while we appreciate your support and want to believe that that's going to be successful, there's just, it's, there's no way. And, you know, it's just too hard for the neighbors, just even getting a plumber to show up, it's, it's pretty tough.
Thank you, Mr. Firestone.
Hi, I'm Vola Dixon. I lived on Kansas Street for a long, long time. As everybody else on my street, like Ms. Colette and Joyce, I, there's a lot of people, cars coming and parking there, and of course, in our block, when I first moved, the thing was everybody was older, I was the youngest person in our block there. But now there's a lot of seniors, a lot of disabled people. Well, my husband is disabled, and so is my brother. So it's kind of, kind of hard trying to say park somewhere and then drop them off and kind of bringing some, some help or anything. It's, and I did follow cars, you know, say where they're going, and I know the direction where, where they went to. So it's, or they're parking in front of my house, they got in an Uber and went for the airport. It happens all the time, I understand, but it's very difficult for everybody who lives in the neighborhood in there. I've, there's times that I, we need that for them because there's times the cars are parked there and they look kind of questionable. After a couple of days, I called it in and I was told, well, how long they been there? Couple of days. Well, we'll come and check it up and write it up. Well, complained again because I was really too questionable, it's just maybe, it's because my husband threw in law enforcement because something's going on. At one point, I called one and it was dropped off because there was some, was stolen, some committed crime they were looking for, but he was parking in front of my house. And so, but I appreciate that we can take care of this, not have any problem. So our neighbors were able to park, and thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon.
Kim Harris, and after Kim will be Bill McCavity.
Hi, I'm Kim Harris. I live at 429 Kansas, lived in El Segundo my entire life, and we have people park who aren't neighbors, so I would like Kansas Street to be add to parking zone three. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. To win your award, Drew, I'll be very brief. I commend what you've done here, Elias and the group, on the parking situation, but we all know it's going to metastasize itself and just move. Kansas City is the only really straight artery between Mariposa and Grand, heavily frequent already vehicular and pedestrian-wise. It's also loaded up with a lot of little people. There's a lot of pre-teens there, kids are all playing ball, so it's already pretty congested with the traffic, and by not including it in the parking plan, which is admirable, what I see so far, we're just metastasizing the problem and moving it. So please, consider Kansas, it's mandatory, I'm afraid, because it's just going to move the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCavity. Mrs. May still has the award. Sorry, you were a little bit lengthy. This can't even be okay.
We have Leslie Carrick, I'm not going to mess that up, and after that will be Heather Putnam.
Hi, I'm Leslie Carrick. I live at 404 Washington, and I share the same sentiments as all my neighbors. This is Juniper, and it's now bedtime, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Hi, Heather Putnam, 423 Kansas Street. Yep, I want Kansas like everybody else. It's a bummer when you're out in your yard and you see, like, it's funny, they come, like Jim and Jack's has their, like, logo on their shirt when they come to work, so it's like, you know exactly where they're working, and they park in front of your house. And then the people that want to come to Kansas Holly Park, I see the cars running around, and then the moms with kids have to leave. Like, to me, that's a bummer, right? It kind of negates the whole purpose of having the park, and, and it's a great park, and I don't mind if the park people park in front of my house, but I'd, I'd like other people not to, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Putnam. Got a few more, right?
Whoops, what are we doing? Yeah. Steve Bobaral.
Hi, let's go, I'm going to go for the award too. Thank you, guys. I would just, I'm on Washington Street, but man, if you don't include Kansas, I feel for them.
Winner, winner, chicken dinner right there.
Brett Ryan, and after that, Lieutenant John Power.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for this time, appreciate it. Brett Ryan, 400 California Street, we're on the corner of California and Washington. So we're not quite in this area, but I would like to abdicate on behalf of both Kansas and Washington, because now we have the streets closest to PCH that are included, they will just move to those streets and exacerbate the problem that's already there. How do I know that? Because they're happy to walk from PCH to Al Street, which is even further. They're happy to move there. So I, I really think that you need to include that because it will just move the problem. On another note, I'm concerned about what someone mentioned here is parking at the Kansas Holly Park because there's no restriction there, so people can park there all day and walk to Sepulveda. I would like to have a four-hour parking restriction there so that people can use the park and not have it blocked out so they can't use it. The other thing I'd like to comment on is the zone that we have. We've got 10 to 11 and 2 to 3, which has alleviated the problem during the day, but it hasn't fixed the problem at night. People come home from work, they park there, and there is no parking at times there. The other thing people mentioned, airport parking. People arrive, there was a car came parked on Friday night. I got a parking ticket for street sweeping on Monday, they were still there during the week, and I eventually called on a Friday, but people are happy to park at LAX and get a $43 ticket or whatever it is and get free parking for LAX. So final point is that with Gray Star, I think, had mentioned about them supporting the parking permits with the project coming with Griffin, problem is they have, unlike... Problem is, they have, unlike Grand Tropez, just a gate, they have two streets which face onto that property. And visitors and people are going to be parking outside on those streets. And if it's not twenty-four-seven at night, especially on Holly, California, that whole parking situation is going to affect us at night. So I'm advocating for twenty-four-seven for the whole zone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Mr. Power.
Mr. Power? Okay, is there anyone else that would like to make a comment on the public hearing? All right, thank you very much. In all sincerity, thank you for being brief, and most of, I mean, y'all pretty much have the same message, so I appreciate that. Mr. Sassoon. I think we're going to close public, the public hearing part of the, do you have a motion to close the public hearing? All right, do you have a second?
Sheriff Baldino, seconds.
Thank you. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero. Council discussion.
Elias, the current permit is on, what, Holly? California, right?
The original one?
Yeah, the one that's already there. There's one on California, so California's taken care of. If it's Kansas, that's kind of going to be out there, it's the only place.
I think it's, I used to live in California. It's farther north than California is where the permit's still in existence.
Right.
Correct? Not, not just due west of where they're talking about here.
Well, I would agree, we would have to think about Kansas. But I also am concerned about having twenty-four-hour parking around that park. So I think that should be an hourly parking, so that everyone from the community can go use the park, and that gets turned over, as opposed to residential twenty-four-hour, it could stay there for a while. But, but I agree. I mean, looking at it now, if you don't include Kansas, that there's going to get bombarded with people parking there. And this is, let me also make a comment. When you, we talk about cars being there overnight, you talk about suspicious activity. Please notify our police. They are very responsive about this. They will go out there, if they get enough comments about it, they will increase patrols. I believe they already have. We want you to feel safe on these streets, we want you to feel safe in your neighborhoods, and hopefully we can find out a way to even let you park, okay? But when it comes to things that make you feel unsafe, don't hesitate on contacting our police officers, please. Thank you.
Elias, have we looked at, what's the criteria for actually getting permits per, per home?
In this area, Zone 3, because mostly are not houses, we are, we are going to provide two, two decals, and three if they prove to us that they have three vehicles. In other words, we're going to give two decals per unit, unless they provide us a proof that they have three vehicles. In that case, they get three decals and two for guests.
All right, so, okay, so now let's, now let's do some math, okay?
Yeah.
Count the homes. Five parking passes basically per home.
Yes, if they, if they have three cars, yeah.
Right, so I think you have to look at the reality of, of the math equation here a little bit. I'm not saying don't do it. I'm saying that five per how, home. Now, I, I would call out, because, you know, pretty much, you know, like, I live on Bungalow. It's, it's a street that's parked on relentlessly, okay? Most everybody's built out their garages, so they can't park their cars in it, okay? Just because you build out your garage doesn't entitle you to two places on the street. That's right. So I do think we have to look at, I, I agree on the Kansas, by the way, I do. I, I think we have to look at it by, you know, address, because then you have Allen Point over there, you have all, all kinds of things kind of muddying the waters a little bit. What are we really talking about here? Are we talking about the, the single-family home residential piece of it? I think you have to prove that not only do you have three cars, but they're actually registered to the address you're living at, okay? Not an out-of-state, not, hey, this is my buddy's car.
That, that's part of the process.
All the time.
Yes, sir.
I'm all for it, we just have to be reasonable about the math behind all this, and we're going to fit everybody. I, I understand. I got it. I'm, I'm just saying that still, five per household is a tremendous amount. Can you clarify that? You said unit, you mean bedroom or unit? I thought you said two per unit, unless they can provide a third.
Two per unit, unless...
Your unit could be a two-bedroom apartment?
Right.
Okay.
Unless they prove to us that they have three vehicles with the registration at that same address.
Got it, okay, that helps, thank you. No, so the max would be three, just so we're clear.
That is correct, three max, and then two...
Could be, then two guest passes, so he's saying it's five total. Okay, five. But the guest passes, yeah, how do those work? I remember on California, we didn't have those.
So if a household has, has someone to come and do, mow the grass, or they have a babysitter, or, you know, there are all kinds of people that they might have to do maintenance. If they do not own the car, and if the, if, if the decal is on everybody's car, then, then we provide those guest passes, so they could provide to their babysitter or whoever, so they would, they would not get ticketed.
Is it a twenty-four-hour pass? You know what I'm saying? Because I, I'm also looking at enforcement, right? Because enforcement's always the biggest problem. We can put as many rules as we want on this thing. If we don't have the ability to enforce it, it's going to be difficult. So I, I, we're all for, I think consensus is going to be, we're, we're pretty much for it. We just got to figure out, how do we do this so that? We got to make this work, because then we're going to have to eventually just copy and paste it around other parts of the city, is what's going to happen. We know that. So we got to get this right, though.
Right.
So that's why it might take a little bit more time, but we do have to get it right.
Right. I work in other cities, and they have very similar policies. In fact, some cities, they, believe it or not, some cities have up to ten guests. And the city I worked before, I reduced it, because I thought that was too many. Now, if neighbors know neighbors, and they have a Bible study, or they have a special birthday, well, they can work together, rather than coming and getting more, you know, those, those, those permits. We, we encourage them to work together in, in, you know, for those birthday parties, or the gatherings, or Bible studies, or what have you.
So I have one question. So the, we put the twenty-four hour in the, in the, on Indiana, and then the current California component, that's, that's the two-hour, the hour blocks, but we're changing that to be all twenty-four hour? Didn't we discuss this the last time?
There was no direction at the City Council meeting last night.
We need to do it completely all the same. So let's just make it all twenty-four hour, and that would be, if we're going to, it would be hard to, for the police to have to manage, well, these streets are two-hour limits here, and, you know, two times a day, and these guys are twenty-four hours. I think you need to make one comprehensive program. And I agree about the Kansas, because since California is already part of a program, Kansas is the lane, the lone, the lone street. Now, also about Illinois, Indiana Court. I know there was, it's that little area, the little cul-de-sac there, that's right just above the, it's a very small cul-de-sac. Should we not be encompassing that area? Because I know there's a lot of apartment buildings there, but it's the one area that's now not part of that Indiana Court right there?
Yeah. It's, it's not part of the program at this time.
I understand, but it's, I mean, it's one little cul-de-sac, they probably don't know to complain.
Yeah.
But it's, I don't know, I just, you're, yeah, just...
The problem is, we keep adding to it, we're never going to land the plane on it. So we got to start somewhere.
We'll come and complain.
Illinois Court, there really isn't much curb space anyhow. That's mostly driveway to those apartment units.
Okay.
Let me, if you don't mind, we have three zones. The first and second zone do not have twenty-four-hour parking restriction. So is the wish of the City Council to go back and change the signage on those, both, both zones to make it just like Zone 3?
They're merging, if you add Kansas, they become, they're, they're butting up against each other. So you might as well just create one big zone there. Because you have, because the, the, I'm not sure if it's Zone 2, it's that California area, right? Is that Zone 2?
Yes, part of California is Zone 2.
Street in the middle, and then you're creating this new one.
Right.
So you're, you're creating, I don't know, it just seems to me harder work if you're having two different programs.
So again, the direction from, what I'm hearing from City Council is to go back and make all these zones to have the same sign, twenty-four.
Because we're looking at the blue lines, those are the two-hour parking.
We're not talking about the two-hour, we're talking about Zone 2, which is California.
For, for this evening, on the, the agenda description, if Council wants to bring back additional streets to talk about in the future...
I'm not talking about additional, it's just that you're now having two programs or two zones right next to each other with different programs. That, to me, is harder to manage than having one program for everything.
What I'm seeing is, if we just took the, the two red lines around Washington, we moved them over on to Kansas. Isn't that basically what we're talking about right now?
Yes.
What I'm saying is, you have another zone on California, one more street over, which has a different program. I'm just saying you should try to make them uniform.
I, I think that's probably a best-case scenario, but in this regard, they're trying to address two different issues. The California is a spillover from Grand Tropez that we're trying to address, so the nature of those spillover parkers is probably slightly different than what we have here. On Kansas, you have people who are going south into Smokey Hollow. And on the Illinois and Indiana, you have people going east to Biz House and the Hotel. And then they both share some of the airport parking. But I think if we're solving for two different things, it's okay to have two different zones, and in the future date, we can harmonize them if we, if we want to. But I don't want to make great the enemy the good on this one. I think, that's right, that's right. And it's, I think that's an important distinction about where we, where we draw the partition of the three, four, and five hundred blocks there, but that could be, I don't know, can we address Kansas as a, as a, as a point of parliamentary procedure? Can we address Kansas in this meeting, or can we only address Washington, the only agendized item?
Well, what's on there is, what's, what's, what's allowed to be discussed this evening is what's in Item 2, which is restrictions on Washington Street from Mariposa Avenue to Holly Avenue to preferential parking Zone 3, and provide direction on the Kansas Street from Mariposa Avenue to Holly Avenue, California Street from Mariposa Avenue to Pine Avenue, and Pine Avenue from California Street to Washington Street. So anything beyond that, we would need to bring back.
No, Kansas is mentioned in there, isn't it? Kansas mentioned on the agenda.
Right, that's right. As long as you're within those, those bounds, it's fine.
I, I like Mr. Ryan's comment. Councilman Baldino touched on it too, that in addition to the twenty-four-hour parking for Kansas and Washington, I think there should be a carve-out around the park. Otherwise, that's the point, there's, there's no one's going to be able to use the park, unless they're just neighbors, no one can come there from the neighborhood outside Kansas Street. Otherwise, any other comments, questions? Mayor Protem, you look like you might, no?
No, that was a pregnant pause.
Okay.
So do we want to make a, a motion?
Feel free, please.
To include Washington in Kansas, but put two-hour parking around the park?
If I may ask, Kansas, both sides of this street? From, from Mariposa to Holly, with the exception of frontage along the park?
Correct. We want the frontage around the park to be two-hour parking.
Two-hour parking along the, along the park. Can be legally, we can do that, right?
What about up front on Holly as well, Mr. Sassoon? For the park? Because that's, that's like two parking spots or something.
Right, so I defer to the attorney. Could we include parking restriction and include Holly as part of Zone 3 at this time? Or do we need to agendize it at a different?
It was the fourteen-hundred block east Holly.
Within this, this description?
It says Holly, Holly right here, Item 2, from Mariposa.
Longest within the description of this area, that's okay.
So yes. You could keep one foot in this boundary area.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, did you get, did you get that? Okay, you want to, you want to...
Holly from the limits, if you would, please?
Two-hour parking for the park? Do you want two-hour, four-hour?
I would defer to the, what do you think, based on your experience, if that's two hours, good for a park? An hour, what's the?
What are the limits on Holly Avenue from where to where?
It would be Holly from Kansas, but maintaining, but with, with the park inclusive, so that Allen Point intersection, from Kansas east to Illinois on Holly, but inclusive of the parks, that takes you a hair west of Kansas in the fourteen-hundred block.
Okay. So for Holly from Kansas to Illinois, I would recommend to be consistent and make it twenty-four hour.
No, I was asking about the park, though, the frontage of the park, Elias?
In front of the park.
Two hours, four hours, what, what's, what's the norm?
I would, I would recommend four hours, not two hours, because by the time people...
I see hats nodding, okay.
Yeah.
Good, okay. Do you want to restate your motion?
Yes, so restate it, so to include Kansas and Washington, as stated, and then four-hour parking around the park, on Holly and Kansas. Yeah, and Holly.
So the frontage along the park on Holly to the west of Kansas does not, does not account, because the, the park is, is at the corner. We are only talking about along the park to the north of Holly, correct?
No.
No, we do want to include the corner.
The corner as well.
Yeah.
Okay, four hours. Okay. I believe I got it.
And this is a pilot program, right? So if there's problems, there's issues, like, first we got to put the signs up, then we got to enforce it. But give us feedback. This works, this doesn't work. And I'm sure we'll hear from your neighbors if the traffic's getting pushed over there. But we're trying to figure out, with the increased density on PCH, with new developments coming in, not just in your neighborhood, but all over town, what can we do as far as a parking permit program that makes sense? So thank you for your time and your input, and taking the time to come and talk to us. I appreciate it.
Okay, so we have, we're not done. We're not done. We didn't approve it yet. We're, we're not done. Nothing's official yet, folks, sorry. So we have direction from a council member's staff, we have consensus there. City Attorney, would you read the resolution, please? He was expecting us to go on.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, designating preferential parking zone number three is ready for adoption.
Okay, who would like to move approval?
So moved.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero.
Now you can...
Madam Clerk, do you want us to vote on, we should vote on, okay, so we had a motion. We didn't have a second, though, on Councilman Perstuck's motion for the direction, did we? Thank you. Who would like to make a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero, great. Now we're done, thank you very much.
Can I ask one quick question on the item? And this is, there was raised, there was an issue with, with rental car, and I suspect that's not rideshare rental car. But if we have, if that is one of our rental cars franchisees in town, as part of their development agreement, they have onsite parking they're required to utilize. So if we have an issue with that, can we look into that? I'm not naming names. I'm not naming names. I'm saying if we have, as part of that development agreement, are they required to park on their property or behind it?
That's right, the, the, without naming names, the, the businesses that, that rent cars locally have a conditional use permit, where they're conditioned to park onsite, as well as a couple off-site locations, and expressly prohibited from parking on the street. And so that's something that we're working on.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mayor Protem. I'll run to Item Number 10. Going backwards, public hearing to consider amending the city's CDBG program for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Reject all bids received for CDBG project number EWT307, and instead fund the AD compliant curb repair, or excuse me, curb ramp installation project. Now is the time and place here to fix for the previously mentioned item. City Clerk was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner.
Yes, miss.
Has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
No, mayor.
Okay. Public hearing is now open. Mr. George will make the presentation.
Yes, Mr. Sassoon, we'll keep him up at the podium.
Sure.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor and members of the City Council, good evening again. Recording this item on February 7th of last year, City Council adopted a resolution number 3591, approving the use of fiscal year 2324 CDBG funds for the El Segundo Library Park Path, Pathway Project. The engineering plans for this project was approved by City Council on January 16th of this year. On February 6th of this year, we received two bids, which were about twice as much as what we had expected, frankly. The high bids are due to challenges with respect to this project, including phasing of the project, meaning that the, the contractor would have to do this work in segments because of, of the festivities that are going on at the, at the Library Park all the time. Uh, at this time, staff recommends to reject all the received bids for construction of Library Park Pathway improvements and reappropriate funds to install ADA compliant curb ramps and authorize city manager to execute contract with the Los Angeles County Department for the ADA compliant curb ramp reinstallation. And I'd be glad to answer any question you may have.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Sassoon?
Uh, no, basically what happens, we had some alterations to paths. It came back at a million dollars. You're saying that's way too expensive. We should reject that and instead just do this other thing to make it ADA compliant and save a bunch of money doing it that way.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add as part of the broad, I think, quarterly theme of, of not throwing good money after bad, and if it's a bad program, I have the moral courage to drop it. So thank you, Elias.
Yes.
Great, all right. Public hearing is now open for public input. No comments?
I do not have any cards.
Anyone in the audience like to address this matter? See none. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Pimentel.
Thank you. That was Pimentel. Do we have a second?
Second.
Purstuck, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Okay, uh, council discussion. Any comments, questions? Seems like a prudent move. Okay, do we have a motion to reject all bids?
Pimentel, so moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Purstuck, second.
Great, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. City Attorney, would you please, uh, please read the resolution by title?
The El Segundo Community Development Block Grant fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four, program to cancel project number six zero two, six zero three dash twenty-three, and reappropriate one hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars in program funds for an alternative program to install Americans with Disabilities Act compliant curb ramps. It's ready for approval?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Drew runs first.
Pimentel, second.
Sorry, okay, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero, great. All right, next up, we need a motion to authorize the city manager to execute all contracts. Anyone so inclined?
All Dino so moves.
Thank you.
Pimentel, second.
Great, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. All right, thank you. Good idea. Good idea. Okay, Councilman Purstuck had a great point. We're gonna move up item thirteen unless someone, anyone's opposed. Fifteen? Fifteen, thank you. This will be the Environmental Committee Work Plan. Is that okay with everyone on the dais?
That's a great idea.
Environmental Committee Work Plan. And we have our environmental chair, Tracy Miller Zarniki, who works closely with Director of Public Works Elias Sassoon. Mrs. Miller Zarniki.
Dennis, you can come up here too. All right, we need to load the presentation, uh, but I'll start by saying hello again, uh, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of City Council and staff, everyone watching from home as well. Thank you for making time on your agenda this evening for an update. It's been a while since we've been back here. We were half staff for a very long time. We are back with, uh, six current members in our committee. Happy to be here tonight. Two of them are present, Kevin Butler, our vice chair, and Dennis Fox, who's hiding back there, is also with us in the room, watching from home. We also have Kevin Atmore, Shannon O'Toole, and Heather Sutherland. Uh, they all give a lot of time and effort to our city in this respect, so I'm grateful for their participation. Uh, as you know, some of the audience may not, the Environmental Committee is tasked with reviewing city environmental practices, advising council on goals and objectives for city governance over municipal, residential, and business entities with, in its jurisdiction. We also give input regarding some of the looming challenges that affect our community but are beyond our range of authority, one of which I will not mention in this moment, but you know very well. Uh, what we, whatever we do though, our goals and objectives are developed through focusing and finding balance on three pillars of sustainability, which are economic vitality, environmental vis- uh, viability, and social, uh, equitability. Uh, let me think, do we want to get the, yes, there you are. Perfect. That covers that one. Here we are. The sectors of our work cover these eight categories that you see on the screen, energy conservation, solid waste reduction, urban planning and development, hazardous waste, transportation, air quality, water conservation, and governance. Uh, we look through each of these lenses to identify specific actionable recommendations that align with the environmental goals gathered in the South Bay City's Council of Governments Climate Action Plan, which this body approved in twenty seventeen. Uh, here's a look at a few of our past actions here, some of which were greenlit by previous councils and some of which were not. But by putting them on here, perhaps it will trigger some thinking to future changes that might not have happened yet. I won't take your time to read them all. This will be available for your viewing afterwards. But just a few highlights of those committee efforts include the Green Business Recognition Program, which you saw earlier this evening, big support of the community. Uh, expanded water conservation efforts since drought was a big looming concern for a few years here and will probably come back to us again at some point. Uh, we were pleased to work closely with West Basin and the COG to do some public education and also promoting the see something, say something, uh, mentality and use of the report and issue button on our city website, uh, to call in when folks see errant sprinklers or leaks or runoff issues. Um, on the next page, I think we'll go to, uh, we were pleased to kick some of the dust off of the twenty-eleven Bicycle Path Plan that was sitting around for a while. Uh, we now have lovely sharrows in town and a little more understanding of where bikes can and should be. Uh, next level of the, of that, we'll talk about in a minute. Uh, we also were pleased to advocate to hire an environmental manager, which we are thrilled is becoming a reality, uh, and that city adjustments, um, adjustments were made to the city procurement policy to think about buying less or buying recycled materials or recyclable items. Um, and let me go to the next page now. These are some of the current tasks. So our current work plan entails these efforts that you see here and a few other random things that come up from time to time. Um, at this point, I want to point out one of the things under the solid waste reduction is we are thinking about recommending alternative, green alternatives at city events and, uh, having that qualify for permit discounts. This came up in a meeting, uh, in the recent past. We have a pilot program, uh, with the Kiwanis event coming up next month. We're gonna see how that works as far as their greenness. Maybe come back to you with some thoughts for checkboxes that perhaps, uh, other entities might be able to apply for a discount at events like that. We also would want to talk about perhaps bringing that into the farmer's market space as well, as a regular thing. Um, also on this page, let's see what else we have. The LTN is on that page as well, Local Travel Network. We are big fans of that and are trying to continue to help with, uh, some education in the community about it, cause there's a lot of questions like, what's with that turtle sign? So, uh, we are going to continue to express what that means in, in consolidating and suggesting where and when slower vehicles may ride about our town, but also to connect our town outside of our bubble to the rest of the South Bay. So we will continue to work with, uh, the COG on that as we can. Um, I think on that one, that was all I wanted to hit on. Let me see here. Um, yeah, let's go to the next, oh, this page, yes, here we are. With this one, um, I really do hope that someday we can eliminate that top concern from our list of things to do, but until then, some of us have spent countless hours trying to help problem solve in that space and will continue to do so. Again, I'm grateful for the support the city has gathered for upstream legislation and code enforcement to help us on that topic, but it's not done yet, so that will stay on our list for a while. Um, the other thing on this page I really am excited to talk about is the mojo that our little blue butterfly resident has gotten these days. Um, it's a great dividend of our longstanding support in the committee for the El Segundo Blue Butterfly Conservancy. The hard work of Monica Davis and Barbara Boland is, is really where this all is centered. Um, but through our joint work on this, uh, there are now intentional native plantings in town in both, in private residences, on businesses as big as the school district, uh, now on city property, uh, with another two hundred and fifty plants going in this coming weekend along Imperial Highway. And this is literally grassroots, or we don't really want to say grassroots, cause that's not very water friendly, but that is the kind of small action that can go into a bigger action and have a greater effect on our community. That's what we're all about here. So again, another plug for this Saturday, if anybody wants to get dirty, get out there and, uh, plant some more plants with us this weekend. Um, the other thing on this page I want to say is we are glad to be extra ears and eyes at meetings of some of those entities you see listed there. Things that might affect our, definitely affect in most cases our, our community here. Um, I think a few years ago, uh, Councilmember Drew had appointed or suggested appointing one of our members to the LAWA Committee, and I think that was a good pairing. So if you see those opportunities, please bring them to us and we're happy to sit in on those to extend your range of where you can listen in on these things. Um, we're here to listen and report back on things that we think are important for your attention. Um, the one thing I want to mention also on this page, the last item on there, uh, at the end of twenty seventeen, we did get an approval to include, uh, environmental impacts on staff reports where applicable. I don't think that ever actually got into the documentation. I think that is part of, we had a little, um, city manager shuffle going on, so maybe we can dust that off and consider bringing that back into play. So I appreciate the time, uh, that you all took to, uh, speak with some of our members individually about what you want us to work on, and I'm here tonight to say our future committee work depends on what you would like to see as well. Again, keep thinking on what you saw tonight and what you've, uh, had conversations about. Reach out to us at any time, because we are here to serve the needs that you have for our community and, and in the best interest of all of us. So, um, on our last page here, I'm just gonna say why we do this, um, especially since it's a labor of love instead of payment. This is our why. It's really for the next generations, uh, knowing that every eco-minded change makes a difference. And, um, I thank you for your time tonight and your collaboration in, uh, support of the health and well-being of our lovely city here. So with that, I'm done presenting. We are here to hear your feedback and, uh, also any thoughts going forward. Again, if not tonight, you know where to find us.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Miller Zarniki. You're right. Thank you for the reminder on the staff report. That should be really easy for us to do. We did talk about that and authorize that at the dais a long time ago. And it's just to understand the environmental impact of any decision. And I don't know why we haven't implemented that. You're right.
I think there was some turnover happening.
I think you're right.
So, uh, we'll, we'll find that and give you that info, Daryl, and we can talk about that. So, that is all from us.
But thank you very much, and I just want to thank you and the, the, the committee for giving up your time for our community. Um, it's, you know, a lot of hours, extra hours like you do, you volunteer. And I'm just really pleased to, that you guys can come and report and give us an update. You know, you are our, our environmental eyes and ears of the community, and we really thank you and appreciate you. Um, the one, as such, one thing to think about, um, you know, I've been walking on the beach lately and it's very dirty. I mean, I know that NRG used to have a organized cleanup week, especially coming out of the, in the springtime. And with that being gone, there's a bit of a hole there, an opening. Um, I wonder if there's any company that would like to assume that role or, or organization. But I think if we could somehow create some type of, um, organized effort, cause I know there's, like, the NCL group, uh, teams, girls and mothers would love to do it. I just, we just need to get someone to organize it. Um, and then, you know, maybe having a bucket of pickers and bags and, and gloves available by the, by the lifeguard station there. People can, as they go walk on the beach, they can pick up stuff. I mean, maybe some type of, you know, on-demand kind of effort, I don't, whichever, something to do, but just, I just think there's a hole there, and I know Chevron does clean it, but at this moment, th- there's quite a bit of trash down there.
Yeah, we, uh, have done one of those before, but we do have to do it with, um, a, a company that's willing to take out the permit and the insurance. We, as a committee, don't have the authority to do that here, unfortunately. We have gone down this path a couple of times, uh, but we did do a successful one with Chevron and a, a couple other community groups a couple of years ago. And, you know, we are always happy to inspire that kind of thinking, and again, in that case, we were part of organizing it, but cannot pull that permit.
Right.
That's our problem.
I just know that NRG used to do it every year. It was an annual event, but with them being.
With Kiwanis, yes, it was.
So maybe we can just work together, find out another company, take that on and make it an annual event.
Absolutely.
You're right, Councilperson Purstuck, we brought it up last week to the NRG rep, remember, at lunch? Brought up that same idea that it's been several years since they sponsored that event, because Steve Obadashian, former NRG guy who's retired, was the one that led that every year, and it was a great event from an educational standpoint too. Did you, have you been working with the schools? Cause we saw some amazing presentations today, um, by a young Pimentel and some others at the, at Richmond Street School. And some of their ideas are incredible about waste reduction, keeping, uh, waste out of the watershed. I mean, some really amazing ideas.
Yeah, we do have, uh, I'm aware that the school district does have an environmental committee as well, and, uh, yes, we do try to help boosters, yeah, boost those ideas into places where they can make change beyond our schools. So I'm glad that you have a next generation thinker.
She has an innovative program by keeping everything on the floor of her room, none of it goes to the ocean.
Small change, right? Start there, start small.
We start locally, start locally, that's right.
We support that.
One of the things, you know, certain streets have, especially on their gutters, we have some very large gutters, especially down Grand, but we don't have any shields on any of our gutters. Is that something we could look into? And I know some cities have those shields to stop debris going down, but I know, like, down along Grand, there's those very large gutters, and I'm sure, you know, animals live down there.
All kinds of things.
But, um, I don't know, just something to look at, some of these, some pain points, we could put some shields or filters, whatever they're called.
Sure.
The screens.
Screens.
We've definitely talked about stormwater and other, other things like that that, uh, end up where they're not supposed to be. Yes.
So, just sorry, just a couple of things. Um, first of all, you know, concepts and ideas are one thing, results are another, and bringing in, was it thirty-three names you wrote off earlier?
Thirty-one tonight, I think.
Thirty-one tonight is, is an amazing accomplishment. I think, I think Drew's list had like five. I think it was like last year or something like that.
We didn't know who would actually be up with come tonight, so by all means.
But again, when, when you see results like that, it's, it's a tremendous amount of work that you put in, and, and to see that is truly amazing. And the second thing that I thought was very interesting, uh, and is true, is you mentioned, you say, hey, you know, the, the, the idea that you cannot be profitable and be green at the same time. Um, years ago, when this whole initiative took off, there was very few alternatives. So those few alternatives that existed were very expensive. Uh, even when it comes down to, you know, my industry and clothing and materials and things like that, the idea of recycled cottons and, and that type of thing is, there's so many more options available right now that are at a very, it's, it's a normalized price. And then the other thing comes down to what you, what you face today was, you know, generationally, the younger generation, this is a normal process, this is what you should be doing. So as soon as you flush out us older people, then, then everything should take care of itself. But anyway, I just want to thank you. Your, your committee's done an amazing job and, um, and some great results, and, and I look forward to seeing more.
If, if I can add a suggested, if there's spare time at the end of your meetings, uh, there seems to be a, a unending fire hose of federal money directed toward green programs of, of any sort, and we don't have any analyst who's dedicated to sort of sourcing or, or sussing those out. I think the most reason why it's three hundred million dollars, if you have a certain quote, uh, amount of Native American representation, and that's obviously heavily targeted toward tribes, so I don't suspect that we will, we will hit that, that threshold. But there's just sort of money from everywhere. Uh, we would do well to know if there's things out there that involve, involve some of the efficiencies or, or power generation, or even, even things like trying different surfaces for resurfacing roads. Those programs are out there, I mean, I, I assume. Uh, some of them are for cities that are bigger than fifty thousand, so may not apply, uh, but I'm sure there's some that are targeted for cities our size. So I'd be interested in that. I'm not trying to add something arbitrarily to your list. But if it is a, uh, if it's a passion project, that might be something that would be very helpful to us, cause it's something that we can action and control, so.
I can tell you that our vice chair, Kevin Butler, is, is aware of those things naturally and is starting to dial them into Elias's inbox. And so that is definitely part of our, our hopes that we can bring into the city. Yep.
Thank you.
Is there anything we can do for you? You've been on this committee a long time. Is there anything?
I think, you know, just listen when we come with ideas and be open to them is all we've ever asked, and, you know, we'll continue to show up here with things and.
Get the staff report changed?
The, the gentle nudge is here, and then I'm happy to dig the archives for you. So, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tracy. Our, our town is lucky to have you for everything you do, uh, to make this town a little bit better and a little bit brighter, and I thank your committee for all the work you guys put in. I appreciate it.
All right. Moving on to, oh, sorry. Oh, yeah. We had a work plan presented to us, and so let's see here, go back to my notes on item fifteen. Do we have a motion to approve the Environmental Committee Work Plan?
Dino?
Purstuck, second.
Great, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. And then, uh, we should direct staff to work with the Environmental Committee to implement the approved work plan and related activities. Do we have a motion to do so?
All Dino so moved?
Great.
Second?
I'll second.
No.
Second, Pimentel, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then?
Yep, five zero. All right, thank you. Okay, on to staff presentations. Item twelve, presentation of the Long Range Financial Forecast Model Update, and our new CFO, Mr. Chung is here.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council members. Tonight's staff will be, uh, will like to present to the City Council the city's long-range financial forecast model that was generated by Urban Futures Incorporated, or UFI. Jim Morris from UFI will also present the model shortly. The Long Range Financial, uh, Forecast Model is a ten-year long-range look at the cities of El Segundo's general fund, financial performance, and outlook. At this strategic planning session held back in May of twenty twenty-three, City Council identified its. city council identified its top priorities, one of which is to use the city's long-term financial plan to make financial decisions. Identify opportunities for new revenues, enhancement of existing revenues, and exploration of potential funding options to support unfunded capital improvements and deferred maintenance to address the aging infrastructure throughout the city. The forecast model serves as a tool for providing the city council and the public with insight on the city's general funds, financial performance and illustration and the what-if scenarios such as recessions, possible recessions, maybe potential new tax measure, new CIP projects, or even MOU negotiations. That will reflect the impact of current and potential policy decisions, economic changes and capture any significant fiscal challenges that will be on the horizon. The model has been in development from 2021, but it never really fully been implemented. So tonight, we just wanted to show the city council a 30,000 level of the forecast. And I'll turn it over to Jim for his presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Paul. Good to be here with you, Mayor, members of the council. A brevity is the order of the evening, looking at your time here. So we include the full presentation we gave to the finance committee and your two members here in your agenda packet, so I'm not going to step through all of that. I'm going to try to take it at 30,000 or 50,000 feet, recognizing there's a lot of business acumen on this council. You're all familiar with forecasting, but I'm going to try to focus in on what's unique about this in terms of a long-term municipal forecast. My goal here tonight is to get you comfortable with the forecast model as a tool because it's intended to try to provide a common ground for financial discussions and financial analysis so that when you're faced with decisions that have long-term financial consequences to them, you can agree that, okay, if our baseline says we go here and we make these decisions and changes to that, our fiscal outlook changes in this way. And that helps to then make you a better body at making that collective decision about whether that's the right set of decisions or not. So I'm going to just be very light touched here. You don't need to know who we are. You can look at that in your own time. So let's try to focus in on understanding this forecast model. And if I go too fast, you can slow me down. I'd rather get to questions that you have so that we can be responsive to that and get you comfortable. High level, this model takes your financial data from the last 10 years. And it takes economic data that's in the marketplace. It is not our economic data. We are not economists. We don't play economists. This is not a forecast according to Jim Morris or Paul Chung or anybody else. This is what the economic data is telling us. So we take that economic data, we take your financial data, we crosswalk that into the model, which has, as we've developed it over the 10 years we've been doing this, a standardized set of revenue and expense categories that generally align with cities across the state of California. It's been customized to the city of El Segundo in order to best represent the types of revenues and expenses that you have. While there's not a ton of variances between cities across the state, there is enough that that customization is here. So you will see that in the outputs. There is driven out of that correlation between the economic data and your financial data, forecasting algorithms for a baseline forecast. And we'll talk about that. We'll take a look at the outputs of the baseline forecast. That baseline forecast essentially says, if we continue to provide the services and do the things we're doing today for the next 10 years, what is our fiscal outcomes during that 10-year period? That is a data-driven forecast. This model then has the capacity then for you to run what-if scenarios. That's the most important part of a forecast model to say, well, if we like that or we don't like that, what if we make these changes? We have a decision before us to do X, Y, or Z, new infrastructure investments, new service levels that we want to provide to the community. What is the impact of that fiscally over the next 10 years? And compare that to your baseline and decide whether those are prudent decisions financially for you to enter into or not. Most importantly, it's a prioritization tool, right? Most cities can't do everything that they need to do. So this is to help you make priorities. You can load into the scenarios, all of those things that you would like to do, and then start to say, what can we afford to do within the revenues that we are expecting over the next 10 years? Okay, let's talk about some of the general assumptions that are in this model so that you understand the outputs from the baseline. Couple of, these are just important points for you to keep in mind as you look at the outputs of the model. Only $1 million every year going into a transfer from your general fund to your CIP program. That had a couple gasps at the committee level, like, hmm, that's not quite what we were hoping for. That's in here as a placeholder. Again, making a decision about funding more CIP. You can take a look at that in your scenarios, or we can adjust that baseline to the extent that you want to. Top golf development, that's included in here, both your revenues and your expenses. I'm going to just book or footnote here or bookmark something here for you. That includes a decision to set aside about $950,000 annually roughly for pension management purposes. I'm going to, I wanted to bookmark that because we're going to show that to you in a scenario forecast as to how that makes a difference in your fiscal outlook if you use that to manage your pension liability. The Chevron tax resolution agreement that you have, we're continuing that forward. We realize you're approaching some negotiations on that. This is also a tool to evaluate those options about what you might want to do in the structure of that agreement with Chevron. But right now, we just hold that as a constant over this period with a reasonable inflator in there. Last item for you to make note of mentally is this includes your new fiscal year '22 amortization base that CalPERS and their investment returns bequeath to every municipality across the state, which is a large amortized loss basis. So most of what you're going to see driving what is a slight set of annual deficits in your forecast is driven by that, that incorporation of that into your forecast. One more comment on that, we're not going to dive deep into UALs and the amortization of those and how that gets done. But suffice it to say that that unfunded amortized liability that you have with CalPERS is something that will change. Over time, every year, you get an investment performance that CalPERS does. They had a huge loss in their investment pool in '22. That creates a loss basis. What we hope is over time, there'll be additional returns by CalPERS that are above what their expected annualized returns are and that will help offset that. That is a dynamic liability that cities have to be patient with. You did the right thing when you issued the POB, you leveled off that debt service, made it manageable. But there is additional unfunded liabilities that can be created when CalPERS doesn't perform based upon their actuarial assumptions that they used for determining what your unfunded liability is.
Did you account for our pension trust fund when offsetting that UAL?
Say it once again.
Did you account for a pension trust in that? Because that's designed to be our mechanism to deal with that dynamic amortization.
Exactly. And that is, that's why I bookmarked that previously. What's in there right now in the baseline is the set aside of that money. What we're going to show you in the scenario forecast, what if you put that money to work for you, right? What if, in managing that liability? And we'll talk about the difference between the two. But yes, it is in there. Okay, not going to spend a lot of time. We could spend a lot of time on this page. This is just to give you a sense of your big drivers in your forecast model. Not a surprise to you. You've been doing the city's, been overseeing the city's finances. You know these are the big drivers on your revenue side in terms of your tax revenues and your fee revenues. What we want to show you is just some basic outputs in terms of your historic average annual growth rate for these large categories of revenues and expenses, what the forecast trend line is in the, in the model currently. You can adjust that forecast trend line. The model has the ability to dial in your baseline. We generally recommend that you keep it with the average trend line unless there are local conditions that you determine are important to adjust for in that. But these are data-driven trend lines in your baseline forecast. And then to show comparatively, your 10-year prior history of average annual growth rate versus what's forecasted in the, in the model, what the data is telling us. Forecasting is inherently conservative. And so, you know, if you had forecast trends of average annual growth rates that mirrored the last 10 years, I'd be telling you, you've got a problem with your model, that you're not likely going to see a repeat of the last 10 years in the next 10 years. It's what does the data tell us? And if you've looked at long-term economic data, you know that inherently becomes more conservative the longer you go out. So the coloring, green tells you that it basically is close, if it's a revenue, close to what your expense trend lines are. So they're, they're healthy revenues. If it's orange, the trend is a little less than you might see. The business license tax in there, that was a question raised at the committee level. The changes you made to your business license taxes are in the forecast model. It's off of your FY '24 data. The trending of that may be a little low based upon the particularities of the ordinance. We've talked about that with staff, going back and reviewing that. So that adjustment may need to be made in the forecast trend line for that particular set of revenues. On the expense side, a couple of things, obviously, low growth in your salaries and wages has been healthy. Projected out, that's a pretty reasonable assumption at two and a three-quarters percent annual growth. The benefits in contractual services, we'll get to that at the end. There's some concerns there about making sure you're managing those. And then, of course, then this pension liability, manageable because of what you've done in terms of setting it aside, pension management reserve, but it needs to be actively managed. We'll talk about that.
When you forecasted out the wages and salaries, did you take an assumption that every position is full going forward? We're completely staffed?
We've got a vacancy factor in there that continues in that forecast assumption based upon what you've historically had as a vacancy factor.
Okay, but you'd be trying to capture, like, we greenlit hiring a bunch of more police officers. Is that embedded in your forecast? Or can we go in and say, assuming we're successful and we hire this many police officers, what's that going to look like?
Certainly, if you have a declining vacancy factor over time because you're filling those positions, we'd want to capture that. Right now, we're assuming that that general churn given, is it about the same? Got you, okay. But to the extent that you've put that, those new funded positions in your budget, it's driven forward in the forecast model.
Is contractual services driven by legal fees?
Driven by the part?
Legal fees, the contractual services?
It's one factor, and that's rolled up underneath those contractual services is the legal fees. So, but there are several different components of that, and we could break that out. And you could see it, Paul can provide that to you. But that's one area of that. Let's take a look at the outputs. Want you to take a look at what are a standardized set of outputs. We can customize these for you to the extent that you have different ways you want to look at the data. We want to provide these three to you because you want to have, we recommend over time that you have consistent outputs that you look at graphically so that you can compare that over time. And you're familiar with seeing the same type of outputs. As we said, the, oh, sorry, before we jump into that, this slide's here, not because I want you to read it, but simply to prove to you that there's actually a model that sits behind this. This is the roll-up page. Behind this are about 10 different modules that drive the various different aspects of the model. But there are real numbers, and that's provided to you. It is your model. It is for your staff to own and control. You don't need us. We don't provide that. We're happy to help provide a service and help you adjust it, customize it to your heart's content. But we don't feel that you should be beholden to us to make sure it can output what you need to. Your staff is capable of doing that.
Just one note on that. For the current fiscal year, it looks like wages and contractual labor went up 6.5 million, which on a basis of 50 million, that's pretty substantial. I don't know what that's from, if that was union negotiated increases. But it's $4 million more in wages for this year and $2.5 million more in contractual labor. But then we're assuming it's relatively flat going forward based on that 2.75.
Yeah, about two and a half quarters.
So I don't know what anomaly that was in this year, or if that was incentives maybe for police? Would that be?
Lateral moves and arbitration.
With those bonus, Ms. Chung, with the bonus payments for arbitration agreements signed or and/or transfer bonuses, would those be in salaries? Yeah, okay, that might explain it. Thank you.
Also, just because.
We did have a large. I don't know if that's, I assume that's probably part of it.
Yeah, to the extent that those were fees. Certainly, if there's one-time things in this, we work with staff to back those out. This is, this is intended to represent your year-over-year expenses and revenues as opposed to one time.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's why I'm looking at this. Because they went from 32 million, they being salary and wages last year, to 36 million. That's like an 11% increase. But then we're expecting it to be 2.75 going forward. And then contractual labor, it went from 10.5 to 13. That's like a 25% increase. So I just, I would like to know at some point a little bit more about that, what's in that. Thank you.
Yeah, important points. We are beholden to your data, so we can't disaggregate more from your data than you provide. So to the extent that there are one-time expenses or revenues rolled up into an object code, we take it down to the, to the most disaggregated level it can be, your object code level of budgeting. But beyond that, if you have one-time litigation fees rolled up into a contractual services code for your city attorney, general costs, we provide a mechanism by which you can back that out, but it has to be done a little bit more manually. So that refinement is certainly a process that we want to make sure is dialed in going forward.
Yeah, sorry, it's just because that sets the baseline for all 10 years. So I'm just looking at this, like, historically, we've been at 80 million roughly in expenses. And now we're up to 90, we went from 83 to 95. I mean, that's, that's a considerable jump in one year. So just, I would want to understand a little bit more about what's in that, if that's going to be the baseline for the 10-year forecast.
Yeah, excellent points, Mr. Mayor. So to that point, we think it's helpful oftentimes when looking at your fiscal data is to understand your past as to understanding where your future is headed. So we just put in graphical outputs that have your 10 years past, a little narrative there about the timeline and what are some important benchmarks. To the point of tracking one-time fees and revenues, you see the POB issuance that brought in one-time bond proceeds that were then promptly transferred out to pay CalPERS for the unfunded liability. There's a small operating deficit in the baseline forecast. And so you will see that. It's better represented by the bar chart, harder to see it with the line, trend lines. But they're not unmanageable, but it is something to be very cognizant of in terms of what the city's outlook is. And then the other standardized output that the model provides is how this impacts your overall fund balance and what do you have left over at the end of the day to put towards additional opportunities that you're looking for. What I want to show you next then is the purpose of this as a tool because it allows you to stay in control of the decisions, that what things can you do? What decisions can you make? What actions can you take to change your fiscal outlook? And so here's a scenario forecast, very simple, two things that we worked with your staff on to put in here. One is a property tax revenue. HDL came back, your property tax consultants, and said, looks like there may be, we're not quite sure, but just FYI, about $900,000 more in property tax revenue that you may receive this year. And so what would that look like if that was, turns out to be the case? The second one was to the council member's point about the UAL management and the pension liability management. What if we took those funds that you set aside into a pension reserve and transferred those? Don't put them in, don't leave them in the pension reserve, but put those as additional discretionary payments called AD. called ADPs, to CalPERS in order to begin to prepay that liability and not have it amortized over 20 years? And that makes a difference. So what does that look like? Here's your baseline forecast. Again, it's kind of hard to see with the trend lines when they're this tight. So we'll take a look at this on the bar chart. Here's your annual deficits that you see in the baseline forecast. We make those two adjustments, and you go from a forecast that has annualized operating deficits to one that generally has annual operating surpluses. Small, but it makes a difference. And we can see that in the fund balance. When you look at this, this is your baseline forecast, a declining fund balance with those deficits in there. Make those changes, and you've got a rising fund balance, not dramatically, but certainly presents opportunities for additional undesigned revenue in your fund balance that can be put towards other opportunities and priorities that the city has. Okay.
Does that transfer to CIP, does that anticipate some of the reimbursements that we have, some of which are contractually obligated to receive? So that 8 million will jump to six, or will reduce, at least to six, over the next two years? Is that anticipated in this model?
Yeah, I can't say for sure what those look like. I mean, it goes from an $8 million one-time CIP transfer this year down to 1 million. What that would entail in terms of that being a net one versus 3 million that might be reimbursed over the next number of years? And even that reimbursement of the 8 million, I don't know. I'm not familiar with that? No. Yeah. Yeah, if there's additional revenue coming back in, then that should be in the model. I don't believe it's in there right now. Certainly, we haven't put it in there, so.
Yeah, we have an additional one via CDC from the Chargers, and then the one from the district that will come in as well.
Oh, nice. Well, good. Those are important updates, then, to make.
And then, real quick, is there, like, for these added, like, these changes, you know, these one-time changes that will affect the model? Do you have a repository place for, to log that information so that you can say, hey, was that in there? And you can look back and say, yeah, was it in there or not in there? So there's trackability?
There is. What I don't show you in this, the way the model's set up, again, so that is fully within your staff's control. There's a front page that tracks those types of, you know, notes, additions and changes. Most importantly, the way the model functions is there's a control panel that the staff works off of, that is capable of fully adjusting the model, and they don't need to dive into the backend. They don't need to adjust the numbers, they don't need to play with any of the formulas in the back, nothing. They stay on the control panel, and in that control panel, you can see the adjustments that you make. So that you can go back, reset it to zero, start over again, run as many scenarios as you want.
So there is, in the model, it's built into, like, if someone says, hey, why did this change? And, you know, six months ago, you can go back and see who made the change and what the change was made?
You would know, yeah, you would be able to understand what was the difference.
So there's a record of all the changes that you're adding into it, okay.
We included in here, and I will be very light-touched on this at this point, just fiscal outlook observations. We're a third party outside looking in. What did the model tell us? Not that you need us to inform you, but here's our general observations, something that you might see from your staff in this kind of form, if you like it. But a couple of strengths and opportunities that we see with the city. City's got incredible revenue diversity. We do this across the state, and in comparison to your fellow cities, you have a very strong, diverse revenue base that is very healthy and likely a good resilient factor in your economic outlook. The baseline revenues are projected to grow slightly faster than your expected baseline expenses, so that's a positive trend line there. Reserves, you've got currently a healthy set of reserves, fully funded reserves. You've got some undesigned revenue on top of that. In fact, you're taking some of that and transferring it to your CIP for some important projects. Maintaining that reserve level, important because you saw those annual deficits drive that spending down of your fund balance and even dips into your reserves. Another strength that needs to be, again, kind of managed, but it's a strength, you've had low overall labor cost growth in your prior 10 years. And then we continue that with some modest projections that are typically on par with what you see in surrounding jurisdictions of about two and three-quarters percent annual average growth rate, something that mirrors generally the CPI for the region. Some challenges and concerns, certainly, as you noted, the contractual services, both in its increase in growth over the last 10 years, but then also its expected growth into the future. So it's something to look at managing, and it may be associated with some one-time expenses that the city had to incur contractually, that we need to make sure is backed down there. So dialing that in will give you a better set of optics on it, but certainly something to be aware of. Pension management's up there, as we talked about. It's a dynamic liability, it will change next year. We'll see what, well, we do know what CalPERS returns are coming in for FY '23, we already know that. They're a little bit below their discount rate of 6.8%. So we're gonna see another little amortized lost liability come in for the next year. But be patient, but don't sit on your hands and take advantage of the smart fiscal decision you made, which was to create a pension reserve and put that to work for you. Does that mean you need this every-year plan, then, for the next 20 years to go ahead and make those ADPs to Cal, well, they wouldn't be for 20 years, but for the next 10 years to make advanced payments to CalPERS for that? No. But do it today, it changes your fiscal outlook, and then when that changes in the coming years, hopefully, and you see some offsets to the loss with some amortized gains, you can then back that off. That's the dynamic process of managing that pension liability. So it's something important. And then, again, trying to look at opportunities to change those operating deficits in the baseline forecast to operating surpluses. Certainly, there's opportunities there. So overall, it's a generally positive and strong fiscal outlook. Questions that you have at this point? I realize that's thrown a lot at you. Happy to come back or talk offline if anybody has any follow-up questions. We want you to feel comfortable with it. We want this to be a tool that helps you make good fiscally responsible decisions and help your staff bring those to you with a set of optics on it that you feel comfortable with and give you the right tools to make the decisions. Thank you for your time. Further questions?
No, just so I'm clear, what we're talking about here is you have provided us this model.
Yes.
But now staff can manipulate different liabilities, income, and we can project that out 10 years to help us make more sound financial decisions. So it's a livable model that we can actually go in as things change, we can make adjustments to it, and just kind of forecast that out.
Yeah.
And the forecasts are basically very conservative, based on past history, but mostly CPI and what you're gonna expect, so that although not a crystal ball, it's better than taking a shot in the dark, right?
Absolutely, yeah. And it is meant to be a tool, and it is meant to be continually updated, right? It's any tool that you have in your toolbox, if you don't keep it sharp, it's not much good when you pull it out. And so every six, 12 months, certainly is the longest we'd go, but that needs to be updated with both the city's fiscal data and the economic data so that you're getting good optics. Long-term data doesn't change dynamically, even though some of this data that we use is a monthly update, it doesn't change that much. But it's important to keep that top. But yes, tool in your hands to be used by your staff.
Great, thank you. All right, this is a receiving final, thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Good evening, appreciate it.
It looks like we're there about 1% of being structurally balanced, which is, for years, was a pipe dream.
Yeah, you need a break?
So you include the capital improvement requirements we have, but yeah.
That's what I wanted to say, like, this model, assume the plunge is open. Assume we have all the lifeguards meet. Assume that chemicals are gonna continue to skyrocket for chlorine, right? Assume that we're doing a great job recruiting all the police we want. And then let's look at what's gonna happen 10 years from now. I think this is a great tool, a great resource. Paul, we're gonna drive you crazy using this thing.
The good thing is, I love it. If I had the time to spend 10 hours just sitting with that forecast, I would love to do that. I think Jim and also Liz have spent considerable amount of time before I came in here, and I spent maybe a good three hours with that forecast. It's a dynamic forecast that we can really use in the future to make these bigger decisions that the council will be able to project out, what does it really look like the next two, three years? Of course, it's a tenure, but it will be a very useful tool that I will be bringing back to the city council. I think the question the committee asked was, when will we see this again? I think the goal is, after we establish the budget for this, for the next fiscal year's budget, we will update the numbers, and then also, of course, any of the various other CIP items that are gonna come across during the budget study session. After that gets adopted, we'll update the forecast and come back to you, most likely on a quarterly basis, to just kind of give you a picture of what it looks like. And that's kind of the goal for me to present to the city council.
Yeah, I think what it really demonstrates is if we're not proactive, we will have a structural deficit for years to come. And so we have to be very cognizant when making these big decisions, what are we leaving behind? So thank you, Paul.
The good news is it only take us 70 years to fund all of our capital improvement projects at the current rate of inflation.
Yes.
So we have to figure that out. It would be really helpful, Mr. Chung, now that you're new here, to figure out some scenarios for seriously actually funding these CIP projects that we've been deferring for so long, because we're not gonna get it done with that. A million years is not gonna cut it, so that would be helpful to know, thank you.
Yes.
All right, we're on to item, oh, you want to take a quick, yeah, a quick five-minute break, thank you.
We are back, excuse me. Item 13, Proposition A, Local Return Funds Exchange with City of Commerce. And we have our CFO to present, Mr. Chung.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro-Tam and city council members. The item before you is for a fund trade agreement with City of Commerce to swap $740,992 of El Segundo's Propay Local Return Funds for $555,444 in unrestricted general fund from the City of Commerce. This will equate to a dollar of Propay Funds from El Segundo for 75 cents of unrestricted general fund funding from the City of Commerce. LACMTA, or Metro, provides the city an annual allocation of Propay- LACMTA, or Metro, provides the city an annual allocation of Prop A local return transportation funds. In the past five years, the annual allocation has been approximately $430,000. The city has three years to expend the funds, or the funds would lapse, and is required to return to Metro to be redistributed to the other agencies. Since the city does not operate their own transit service or center, majority of the Prop A local return funds are used for contracted shuttle services for the community, mainly used by Recreation Department. El Segundo has 740,992 Prop A local return funds that will lapse on June 30th, 2024. The original plan to, was to utilize the Prop A funds to purchase an EV shuttle. Unfortunately, the city hit three roadblocks. Number one, the city was not able to procure an EV shuttle by the lapsing date due to difficulties of procuring the shuttle. Number two, the city is also challenged by hiring shuttle drivers, especially part-time drivers as well. And number three, it's more cost-effective to contract out shuttle services than to own and operate your own shuttle service. Due to these constraints, the funds will lapse at the fiscal year end. Staff was aware that Metro allows funding swaps with other agencies, so we reached out to the City of Commerce to negotiate a fund trade agreement in lieu of returning these funds to Metro. Staff's recommendation is for our city council to approve the fund trade agreement with City of Commerce to swap out $740,992 of El Segundo's Prop A local return funds for $555,744 in unrestricted general funds from the City of Commerce. Furthermore, staff is recommending, if the agreement is executed, to transfer the $555,744 in unrestricted general funds received from Commerce to be transferred to the Equipment Replacement Fund. The Equipment Replacement Fund has been underfunded for the past few years due to inflationary costs on vehicles mainly. And so this extra funding should help close that funding gap. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Are we pretty sure, Mr. Chung, that this is the best deal we can get, the 25% discount?
Yes. Typically, I've seen 50%, 40%, especially during the start of the fiscal year. It's typical to see 50%. I was honestly shocked when I heard 75%.
So, basically, we're giving up $200,000 roughly, but we don't have a home for that money that qualifies anyway? And we know we're saving money by outsourcing the shuttle that we were considering funding in the first place.
Yes. At noon, I got an email from Metro asking, hey, what are you going to do with these funds? Because they are going to lapse. We cannot extend this time no more. So, we are at their mercy, and the funding swap is, in my opinion, the best option, even though it is 75 cents to a dollar.
And there's no way to use them to contract? We can't use to pay any of our Beach City Transit or any of those things?
We do. So, portion of the Prop A fundings, we do, but it, because we get an allocation of 430,000, we don't use all that, so it accumulates, and then you have three years.
Well, we pilot, didn't pilot. We looked at some of the other contract shuttle services, like that Circuit, right? The Golf Cart Beach Shuttle Company that Long Beach uses and Santa Monica monkeyed around with. That's, but that, that's something we could use this for?
Hmm, no, no, not that.
Well, it's a, it's a shovel service.
But it would have to be a, to my understanding, an EV shuttle, or a shuttle that is a full-on bus.
Oh, it has to be a bus. It can't be.
Yes, yes. It's not a microbus or anything in that nature.
Well, there's that electric trolley car that, who was using that from the senior center down to, down Manhattan Beach Boulevard? Is that good? Who's, who owns that? One city uses, contracted that. It's an electric, it looks like an old-style trolley, but they use it from the senior center to go, maybe it's North Redondo? It goes all the way down Manhattan Beach. I mean, it just seems like there's contract services that, that we could, maybe it's too late in the game.
Right, we're not going to get that done by June.
Yeah, at this point, we are at the mercy of the time.
I mean, some of these, like, I mean, Circuit, you could get done in two weeks, a bunch of kids with golf carts. Like, I can't imagine the, there's a little bit of a lack of imagination, I think, with us, it feels like to me.
To, to the Mayor Pro Tem's point, what are we going to do two, three years from now when we have the same surplus issue? I think, and it's not really to answer, but just to think about, maybe there is something that we could figure out creatively to fund and keep 100% down the line.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
No, I, I just want to thank you for the presentation. As I understand it, if we don't do this transfer, we lose the 700,000 back to Metro.
We would have to cut a check back to 700, that, that amount back to.
So, this way, we, we are getting returned at 550,000.
Yes.
In unrestricted funds. But I also want to thank you for telling us where it should go, right? So, we're going to take this money and go right to use. It's not going to be kind of floating around. It's going to go to some underfunded reserve account right now to help update our equipment needs, so, uh, thank you.
Okay, someone like to, well, I got a couple of things here. So, one is, I'd like the city attorney to read the resolution, and then we'll weigh in on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is. It's not, I didn't have a icon. A resolution of the City Council of the City of El Segundo approving a fund trade agreement for the exchange of the Proposition A Local Return Funds with the City of Commerce pursuant to Section 2B2 of the Los Angeles Metropolitan Transportation Authority Local Return Program Funds Guidelines is ready for adoption.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to move approval? Baldino so moves? Great, thank you.
Perfect second.
Oh, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, that was you, right? Did you say aye, Mayor Pro Tem? Okay, five zero. Okay, these, we have some others we could put together. The first one is to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the fund trade agreement between the City of El Segundo and the City of Commerce to assign 740,992 of its fiscal year 2023-2024 Prop A local return funding authority to Commerce in exchange for $555,744 from the City of Commerce's general fund. Along with that, appropriate 740,992 to account 112-400-5297-5204 Prop A operating supplies. Also, to set revenue budget for 555,744 to account 001300000003909 miscellaneous revenues. Additionally, to set transfer out budget for 555,744 to account 00140000009601 Transfer Out-General Fund. And finally, to set transfer in budget for 555,744 to account 60130000001 Transfer In Equipment Replacement Fund. Can we make a motion on all those at the same time, please?
Sure, Baldino so moves.
Oh, great, we have a second? Drew's second. Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Good solution. Thank you very much. Item 14 requires council member Carol Perschek and us and I to recuse ourselves, the downtown outdoor dining program guidelines, because a long time ago, we drew straws, because several of, several of us had conflicts related to the downtown specific plan, and Carol and I lost, so we're leaving. Did I state that correctly?
Well, yeah, actually, that's true, but now there's actually only two of you with conflicts. So, it's still a issue of you, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I just want to say that I brought, I wanted to, to have this on the agenda so that we can have a conversation about this separate from the downtown specific plan, because I don't want, I didn't want this to consume the whole conversation about the downtown specific plan. So, thank you for bringing it forward, and I wish you well on your conversation.
You know, that's a good point, Carol. Do we still have to recuse ourselves on this? Is, it's, I guess because it's downtown specifically, right?
If you want to have a separate agenda item in the future about outdoor dining, other than the downtown area, then you could participate in that.
But not tonight. Okay, thank you very much. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem and Mattel to convene. That's right, take the phone with you. All right, item 14, discussion of draft downtown outdoor dining program guidelines. Mr. Allen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. As council member Perschek previewed, you know, the item before you tonight, it's just a study session, discussion item only, primarily intended to get ahead of the adoption of the pending downtown specific plan update in the next couple of months. That update, as we've presented in the past, is going to include a provision, or does include a provision, to, to permit and give, give the city the ability to develop an outdoor dining program for the downtown. So, in, instead of waiting for that to happen, and then having that be adopted, and then come back to the council and say, okay, now, now, now we're going to go do that, we tried to, to get ahead of a little bit, pull sort of best practices from surrounding jurisdictions, survey our internally, work with our department heads in public works, public safety, economic development, to put together a, a draft program and, and keep it at a relatively high level tonight. The, the program that was sent out, or that was published, is a combination of best practices, areas that we want some reaction and feedback from council tonight, and then, you know, very sort of specific safety elements, like the, the weight load that's, that's required for a barrier in case of, you know, a crash, for the crash barrier, or in the event of some sort of accident. And so, we're not looking for feedback on those things. They're very sort of technical, and, and we're getting engineering recommendations on the, the, the weight-bearing capacity that we want for the crash barrier. What we are looking for is feedback on four or five very specific things tonight that we'll, that we'll discuss. And, and there's, there's several other sort of programmatic things that, that we're looking for feedback on. And so, again, relatively high level, and we're not looking for any specific decisions tonight, rather just some direction, if we wanted to pursue any other, any other components or elements in the downtown outdoor dining program guidelines. And so, with that, I'm going to hand it over for a couple of slides to Agnes, my analyst in community development, to, to introduce the next couple of slides. I'll pick up, and then we can have some Q and A after that.
Good evening, council members. As Michael mentioned earlier, we will go over the downtown outdoor dining study session. We will look for specific feedback, starting with restaurant requirement or eligibility, which is currently drafted as requiring property owner approval, on-street speed limits with 25 miles per hour or lower, which includes a dedicated on-street parking lane, through access and path of travel maintained along the right-of-way, and signed petition by 100% of adjacent property owners, business owners located within 100 feet of the same street, same side of the street. Next, the overall process includes a two-to-four week review timeframe, which includes meetings with staff, submission of the application, exhibits, and fee payments, which will be subject to annual renewal.
Straight to the point. So, some of the additional standards that are outlined in the program guidelines are heavily geared towards the design of the, of the outdoor dining itself. And so, if you recall, the downtown specific plan includes four distinct districts, and each district, you know, what, what spent, where the consultants spend a great deal of time is really defining the physical and aesthetic characteristics of those districts. And so, the way that we've currently crafted the program guidelines, rather than spelling out separate aesthetics or design standards that we want these things to adhere to, we're going to point to the respective district that, that outdoor dining is in. So, if it's on Main Street, then it needs to adhere to the prescriptive design standards and aesthetics that are outlined in the downtown specific plan for Main Street. If it's on Richmond, then for Richmond, and, and so forth. And so, the, the guidelines, unless, unless we really want to identify something separate that we want these, these outdoor dining areas to look like, feel like, and, and be designed towards, are really just going to lean on the, the downtown specific plan. Where, where we found the best practice for the parklist size, most jurisdictions are leaning towards anywhere between two to three, the, the length of two to three parking stalls, or just the business frontage, whatever, whatever is less essentially. So, that is in our, our draft guidelines. We also, sort of similarly, if they're not in the parking lane on the sidewalk, it would be the extent of the business frontage on the sidewalk, assuming, as Agnes mentioned, assuming they can maintain path of travel for ADA compliance on the sidewalk. And then, the parking allowance, this is consistent with the downtown specific plan as well, that we would allow up to 500 square feet without providing any additional parking. And any apportion of the outdoor dining, if it happens to exceed 500 square feet, they would be required to provide parking at one per 300 square feet. And so, that's consistent with how the downtown specific plan is drafted today. This does not contemplate, and we're not proposing that they replace the parking spaces that they'd be taking in the public right-of-way, but again, that's something that we're looking for feedback tonight on. Did, was there, did, do you want to stop, or?
No, you just answered my question.
Um, with, without going into, you know, a great amount of detail, the design guidelines also cover the vehicle barrier system, which I addressed sort of during the intro. We're looking for engineering feedback on, on sort of the load capacity for, for any, you know, crash resistance that we're looking for. There's enclosure standards for light and air, lighting standard speakers for, for, you know, noise and amplified music, basic safety standards for, you know, distance between the crash barrier and the, you know, where patrons might sit or dine. Advertising standards, we're eliminating to one menu sandwich board per, per establishment. And then, the, the general ADA compliance and maintenance standards that would be baked into an agreement with the city. We're also baking in sort of an annual renewal process, and at all times, the city would have removal rights for, for any, you know, abundance of reasons, utility access, or maintenance, or drainage issues, or things that we might have to get into the, the parking lane for any reason. We'd have, we'd remain the right to, to go and remove, or offer the, the business owner, you know, 24-hour notice to, to remove, so that we could service the, the area. These are graphic representations only, they're illustrative, but it just sort of shows where, how this might play out, you know, some of the standards that we're proposing include, which would be similar to the recent state legislation that requires a certain distance from crosswalks and corners, that you could not park within that certain distance, it's 20 feet, 15 feet if it's a bulb out. So, we would emulate that standard. We've also built in a carve-out. If we can make certain findings, for example, the intention of that state legislation was to ensure visibility and, and greater safety for the pedestrians who are crossing. And so, if we can make similar findings for the sake of visibility, we might be able to adjust that 20 feet or 15 feet based on those types of scenarios, primarily visibility, running slope to maintain ADA access or ADA compliance.
So, Mr. Allen, on the corner, you're saying, you know, the length of one parking space is a rough guide. We're not saying you have to have that 20-foot carve-out and then a parking space from the corner, right?
Right, well, yeah.
We're trying to get that visibility for that corner.
Right, the, so the state legislation specifies 20 feet, so most stalls are 18 to 20 feet, but we would be looking for the 20-foot or 15-foot for a bulb out. Now, we're still working on the language for the carve-out, you know, so take, for example, Sausal's on the corner. It, it's immediately up to the corner, but there's a bulb out there. Now, if you measure from the crosswalk to where the outdoor dining actually starts, it's roughly 14, 14 and a half feet. They're very close to that 15-foot margin. And so, we might be able to, there might be some wiggle room if we can make the appropriate findings to ensure that there's that visibility triangle that, that the, the intention of state law was, was, was passed for.
Got you.
Again, illustrative, this would be, you know, roughly two parking stalls. It does go beyond the business frontage, but this shows sort of the vehicle barrier system with sort of the internal barrier system with the distance of, of where the patrons might sit, with bollards. Now, there's, there's several different ways that one can achieve a vehicle barrier system. This one happens to show a wheel stop with some bollards. You also have our fancy green, or not green, fancy orange K-rails out there that you could fill with water. Now, those would probably not meet the aesthetic requirements of our downtown specific plan, but there's lots of different ways that you can satisfy the, the vehicle crash sort of preventative measures. The, in terms of the fees, we did a quick and dirty survey of our surrounding agencies. The overall, you know, again, if we were to look at fees, we would look at a cost recovery only option, but just based on our surrounding agencies, you're seeing a one-time application fee of, of average about $1,500 for one time, $1,500 to $2,000. And then, you're seeing an ongoing cost, the far-right column is an ongoing cost of anywhere between a dollar and $3.75, I think, per square foot. And those things cover sort of the annual or regular reoccurring encroachment permit fees. That could also include sewer fees or other typical fees that restaurants have to pay on a regular basis. And so, just, this gives you a ballpark of, when we come back, this is probably, will probably be within these ranges, I, I suspect, but just to give you a ballpark of where we're, we're probably headed in terms of. but just to give you a ballpark of where we're we're probably headed in terms of fees. Um, so little feedback, uh, and and items that we need to further, uh, study with legal is that we don't actually own the right-of-way. Uh, there's an easement, and so we need to further look at what our rights are within that easement, um, which may include not being able to give exclusive rights to that restaurant or or that establishment for their diners only. It might have to be open to the public, and so, uh, it requires some further analysis. Um, and then the report said that the current ABC relaxation on outdoor dining expires in July of this year, uh, but we just found that state legislation was passed earlier this year that extended that to twenty-twenty-six. So we've got a couple more years. Uh, and and I I would imagine that there will be additional, you know, the food and beverage industry is really pushing hard to to develop some mechanism to allow this on an ongoing basis. So with that, uh, we can certainly dive into the weeds, but sort of the high-level things that we're looking for feedback from tonight, sort of the eligibility standards, the process requirements, uh, design standards, uh, the applicable fee structure that we should pursue, uh, and then just any other miscellaneous items or questions or concerns or things that we did not cover. Uh, for example, uh, earlier while going through, you know, this standard, um, and corner distance requirements, Barbara had raised to me, do do you think about the distance from driveways, which is not something that we had thought about? And so if there's other ideas like that, we'd wanna bake a similar standard from from driveway access points as well, which is not something that we had included. So we're looking for that type of feedback or just overall general questions or direction from council. That, I'm happy to answer any questions, and Agnes is here as well.
Questions, comments, concerns? Can we go to back to slide number two? I guess this will be the eligibility, I don't know, yeah, eligibility piece. Um, the last one there, the last bullet point, I think it's problematic, because you have businesses that that thrive on the outdoor dining, and then you have businesses that have nothing to do with outdoor dining, and you're asking one-hundred percent compliance from everybody around. Um, I I don't necessarily think that is going to be a benefit to this program.
So I I agree. Uh, then you're letting an individual landowner or an individual business decide if there's gonna be outdoor dining on a certain street, as opposed to having public input and asking, you know, folks, what do you wanna do to revitalize? If we want this to be successful, then we have to make it so that it can actually come to fruition. So I think asking for a hundred percent agreement on neighbors on anything is is a long stretch, but, uh, do you wanna walk us through the logic of that requirement?
This this was one of those items we pulled from neighboring jurisdictions. It's it's a bit extreme. It also, um, it also includes jurisdictions where they allow the parameters of the the parklet or outdoor dining to extend beyond the business frontage, and so it might be more applicable in those cases. Uh, in a case that we're not permitting it to extend beyond the business frontage, uh, maybe it's not as necessary. We wanted to put it up here because it's it's a decision point, it's something that other jurisdictions are doing. Um, we certainly wanna be more business-friendly, um, and so, you know, maybe we taper this back, maybe we eliminate it entirely, or maybe there's another process in which we obtain public input.
But I guess my point is, if we're not encroaching on other, if if the restaurant is not encroaching on someone else's business, which I think your parameters here are basically making it that it's gotta be the frontage of the of the establishment, then it shouldn't necessarily affect...
Yeah.
The hard part is it's taking away their parking, right? It takes away two patron parking spots, and if you're not, if you're a neighbor who runs a retail location that's not outdoor dining, and you depend upon that two-hour churn of those two parking spots to get your patrons in, I mean, that is, you know, that that the people don't own that parking spot, you know, a restaurant doesn't own those parking spots. So that's a, they they do have a real concern, a hundred percent within a hundred feet, maybe too much, but I think there there's gotta be some amount of, I I I don't think it's unreasonable to have neighbors on the same side of the street have input, uh, if they're being deprived of of patronage.
Yeah, I'll just, you know, piggyback off of that. When we did do the community outreach about a year and a half ago, probably at this point, where Elias, myself, and Barbara met with about ten business owners who who showed up to two different community meetings, that that was the feedback we got from a non-restaurant who said, uh, or they they were concerned with the loss of just public parking on the street that's that, you know, provides readily available immediate access to their business frontage, um, you know, even if it's a next-door business.
Do we need to be prescriptive on that now, or just say, you know, for for when this comes back?
No, we
Give us some alternatives.
Yeah, we can come back with options if it's if it's a priority of getting some sort of public input, but maybe not a petition or or some watered-down version of this, you know, we we can come back with options.
I mean, oftentimes, right, that those those neighbors, that building is likely owned by the same person, right? So the building owner might might say, look, this is depriving one tenant for another. I mean, there's there's probably different mechanisms involved that might self-correct on that. Okay, so I think that's just identifying as maybe a little bit of a pain point. The rest of them, I think you're fine, though, right? The other three bullet points you got up there, I don't think there's anything untoward there.
No, no objection from me.
Yeah, so I I kinda like Councilmember Giroux's idea there. If you're not encroaching immediately in front of someone's business, it, I I I don't see the logic in allowing someone to put the kibosh on someone else's idea of, I'm gonna use this program and have outdoor dining. Um, we're gonna lose parking, uh, not just because of this, but because that state law that's saying we've gotta have twenty feet of clearance and red curbs, like that, once that goes through our town, it's it's gonna hit all over. Uh, but the question is, do we want to incentivize outdoor dining? Do we want to encourage this and make it attainable?
I agree. And also, remember, you know, it's been four years of this, so it's, we've been living this way with these spaces taken up for this amount of time. And I know when we closed down Richmond, that was a problem, you know, with with the businesses being affected because the entire street was closed down. But I think since we reopened Richmond, have there been many complaints from businesses about this?
I haven't received any.
I mean, in some sense, I think that that situation may have rectified itself a little bit there. So, I mean, on the rest, and we can go point by point, I don't know if eligible, but the next one was what, there was five points you wanted to discuss, right? Eligibility was one, the feedback process, okay.
Overall process, as Agnes explained, looking at, you know, two to four weeks, just depending on how responsive somebody is, there would be an appointment with staff, sort of a site visit of their location, talking about maybe, you know, ADA access concerns, or maybe there's a identifying where utilities are, just to so everybody's on the same page. Application gets submitted with all the exhibits, um, and then if, you know, whatever fees and renewal process thereafter, we'd we'd probably build in some, you know, ability to regularly inspect and and, you know, issue correction notice if if something, if there's some sort of violation, you know, we'd build that stuff in so that we have the ability to go out there and, uh, remove things or move things or or ask for things to be moved, uh, as part of an agreement.
Any questions or concerns on this piece?
Uh, oh, sorry, I was a member.
No, not not on the process, but I guess my question is, if when designing this, did you take a look at what's already existing out there, and can you point to something that you would say, hey, this this would be compliant, this would all have to go? I'm assuming none of this is gonna be deemed, you know, grandfathered in, right?
That's right.
With a new program, if you wanna maintain it, you have to submit the application, there's gonna be review process.
Yeah. It's it's possible that that some of the ones that are out there may may comply or get close to complying, but the other the other piece of it is several of the establishments are still utilizing the city's orange barricades, right? And so when we do go live with this, we'll give everybody a, you know, thirty-day notice, hey, you know, this is this is a new program, you're gonna have to remove these, or we're gonna come and remove them by such and such date, and and between now and then, if you're interested in making this permanent, here's the process. Um, and so, uh, there's, but there's also several establishments that don't come close to complying with these things, and they're they're gonna have to make a a decision, a business decision, whether they wanna invest in the infrastructure needed to to actually comply with these standards.
Yeah, we don't want the, kinda like the, uh, the squatter, where you're just putting the barricades out there to to and not really utilizing the space. That that's kinda happened in a few locations, so, and we're very aware of that. But other than that, on the process, I think that's, I have no issues with this. What's the next? So, yeah, this is a big one, obviously, because we've been looking at orange and and different versions of what, uh, outdoor dining looks like based on what was hodgepodge together. Um, some did a very good job with it, some didn't. So how are we gonna go with the aesthetics? Are we gonna just, like, give guidance on this, or are we going to work with the individual restaurants? Hey, would you like to see, how are we, what's the process for that, or what are you thinking?
Yeah, I I probably can't cite it exactly, but the downtown specific plan details sort of the the design aesthetics of each one of those districts. It also includes materials and suggested sort of color schemes, and so we would be looking at it as long as it's sort of compliant. It's it's how we treat new development in the downtown today anyhow. Uh, there's a design review administratively, uh, that actually ends up going to the planning commission, uh, but we we would do this administratively, uh, but we'd look for the same sort of analysis, making sure that they're consistent with the design intent of the downtown specific plan.
Any questions or concerns?
No, makes sense. The other items up here, you know, the size, parklet size, parking allowance.
I think we're fine with it.
So parking allowance, I get five hundred square feet. If I'm five hundred and one, I have to pay for parking lieu for one space?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the the way that's currently crafted, but there's definitely policy in other jurisdictions where, you know, if you're, you know, you round up or round down, depending on where you where you fall in the fraction, so if we wanna, if you wanna look at that type of...
No, no, I was just figuring out how it works. So we're not, if you take a parking space or two, you get up to five hundred square feet, and we're not gonna make you pay the parking lieu to replace that.
That's right. And you're not gonna be required to replace the two stalls that you're
Understood, okay.
All right. Uh, I I don't think there's really much to go over here, other than I, we just included this, that to let you know that there are standards for these things. Overall design, uh, any any feedback or direction on fees?
Yeah, I got some things here. So so basically, I think, I guess speaking for myself, I I think we wanna maximize what we can do. We wanna get a to to a a nu- a neutral cost for us. It this should not cost the city anything, but we should also not be making any money off of it, in my in my opinion, because we are going to be getting residual uh, benefit and income off the fact that more people are dining there, the restaurants are making more money, people are here. I'm comfortable with that. I just wanna make sure that, you know, for four years, we've been paying for this for the most part. Uh, I just wanna make sure we're not throwing anything in there gratuitous. Let let's just make sure we're getting to to a a neutral cost recovery there, is is the way I look at it. Um, and I I think that will help out the process.
Yeah, I think that that simplicity is, there's there's, you know, to make this simple and easy to understand and easy for business to do or undo, you know, Culver City stands out as pretty streamlined to me with making an annual fee rather than a monthly charge. Uh, I I think that that that, I I I'm not, I don't know if you need us to pick a winner here, but I think that that as a guideline, I think simplicity in the fee structure, uh, capturing the upfront cost and then an annual fee is is appeals to me.
There's no real feedback here yet. We'll have to come back with additional sort of legal analysis on our authorities in the right-of-way.
So this is one of the thing, I, again, you mentioned a couple of restaurants that we have that are that are on the corner, and are we talking about the outdoor dining pieces on the frontage, right? So it's what your address is, it's not on the adjacent street or the 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 corner street.
It would be business frontage, so if you if you're on a corner, then technically you have business frontage on two streets. Uh, you you get five hundred square feet for free, so you could splice it, but either way, it's five hundred square feet free.
Okay.
We hadn't contemplated that, and so, you know, we're certainly, well, you know, happy to to look at a different provision for if you have, you know, there's a handful of restaurants that are on the corner now that have outdoor dining.
Right. Are we good with the five hundred?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm good. Streamline.
Um, can I ask about the, uh, change of ownership provision? Right now, it says it's non-transferable. If the applicant business changes ownership, then the permit automatically terminates. Um, I I understand, I guess the logic is that we we wanna know who has this right-of-way, they're leasing this now outdoor, um, but couldn't that be done through some type of transfer? I'm I'm selling my business, you know, I'm assigning my lease, I'm assigning my vendors. I I would think there'd be a simple way for me to come to the city and say, hey, this outdoor program is now gonna be this guy, as opposed to you have to reapply because, you know, it's it's still there. It's already been approved at this point. It's a functioning thing that we know and we look at, so we're not changing anything as far as you don't, to so to have to resubmit an application, to go out there and look at something that's already existing and has already been approved, seems a little cumbersome.
Yeah, I, yeah, we could build in some sort of notification process or an option for the city to go re-inspect just to make sure that nothing's happened.
Yeah, keep it simple, right? So that you can easily appeal to business people that, hey, this is not a hurdle. You're not gonna lose this all because you don't know if your application won't get approved for the exact same thing that we've got going out there.
Or maybe the fee transfer is over, but obviously you gotta go through insurance, you gotta go through all that whole update, so maybe that's that's where it goes. I think what we're saying is, let's let's not double-dip on the fee just because it got transferred over, I think is what we're we're saying here.
Some capital renewal or transfer, where you can go out and inspect and and check all the boxes.
Or the Inglewood categorical exemption fee, that was a good one. I I was like, wow. Being creative on this. That was one of the things, it's a categorical exemption.
I think that probably has to do with the, they're pretty rigorous time and place of outdoor vending because of the the stadiums.
Um, I do like in this plan how you state that it's for dining or it's for a parklet, like a bench, but we don't wanna have people selling clothes or like, it's not an extension of a retail place, it's an outdoor gathering area, which can be used for dining or just can be used for like a waiting area or whatever it is. So I think that's a good, um, something to capture now before it becomes a problem.
All right.
Any other miscellaneous items?
No, good job.
All right, can I get a motion to direct staff, I guess, to continue developing the outdoor dining program?
Yeah, he's gotta come back with like
Yeah, we'll we'll come back.
Oh, no, we have to have a motion.
Is it just a receiving file?
It is not a receiving file. The, I will move. Don't make me get that gavel. Who would like to join me in this movement? I will move it.
I will second your movement.
All in favor of my movement?
Aye.
Aye.
Agnes, nice job.
My movement is unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Sergeant-at-Arms, can you retrieve the mayor and Councilmember Bruce Day?
Is that me?
Please, probationary sergeant-at-arms.
Should've given her two more sides, man, she did a good job. Well done.
Just went off the rails, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well done. City clerk reports.
Actually, yes, I would like to go back and revisit your consent items, because I believe we confused it with procedural motions, and I do not believe we took a vote. So if we could just do it just in case, and if
Sure.
See tomorrow when I redo this that we did, then we're good.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I have a feeling we did not.
Double vote.
Okay. So who would like, there were no polls, I remember that, who would like to approve consent?
Baldino's.
Sorry, okay, thank you.
First.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Five zero, thank you. Anything else, Madam Clerk?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, City Treasurer is not here. Councilmember Baldino.
Um, yeah, a few quick items. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I thoroughly enjoyed our time today at Richmond Street School, uh, watching presentations from fifth graders on civic responsibilities and projects that they came up with. Uh, thoroughly impressed with those presentations, and thank you for inviting me. Uh, I'm grateful for Eric Carey. He invited me to speak to the Boy Scouts here in town. I did that last week, uh, again, answering questions about civic involvement, and I think it led to the email about the flag, so thank you to staff for responding to that and showing that the city is responsive. When you send an email, you can get a response. I invite everyone, uh, this Saturday at ten a.m. to ha- join me in, uh, welcoming our assembly member, Al Merutucci. He's having a town hall at the Jocelyn Center. Will give us an update on what's been going on in Sacramento. Um, and then in the spirit of our theme, City of Champions, I have an announcement, uh, and I'd like to congratulate Alexandria Taylor. She is a junior at El Segundo High School. This last weekend, she competed in the Los Angeles Marathon, and, uh, her results were quite remarkable. She finished first in her age group, she finished second overall in the Opens Women Division, and she finished with a under-three-hour time, coming in at two hours and fifty-six seconds. And so I looked that up and I learned that that puts her within the one percent of all women runners in the world. Uh, so a remarkable achievement from an astounding young woman in our community, and I give her my congratulations on that feat. Thank you.
Did you say that was her first, too? Did you say that earlier?
I believe it was the first marathon she's run.
Wow, let's stop there, right? Yeah, done. Wow, let's stop there, right? Done.
On to Boston.
That's great. Thank you very much. Councilmember Drew?
Yeah, continuing on that theme. Actually, I think we're going to be recognizing several different groups of champions, non-professional sport champions, that is, and El Segundo Youth Cheer actually won in Orlando, I think. They won the national championship for their age group. I think the high school has Winter Guard won an international championship. It's just, it's been a pretty incredible run, started by the Little League, but everybody else has been kind of picking up afterwards. So it's just nice to see all the things happening here in the community, and I think they're going to be in in the next month or so to be recognized, but that's all I have. It's just been, it's been a fun run.
So to continue on that, I have a dancer from the College of Irish Dance who's heading off to Glasgow, Scotland, tomorrow to dance in the World Championships in the U11 competition. So we wish her well, and hopefully she'll represent well. I also want to thank EDCO for, you know, honoring our contract and doing the cleanup week. I know I posted a lot on social media, and I saw a lot of stuff out there on the curbs, which I'm very thankful for. But please note that that doesn't mean you get to put that stuff out every week, and it's only on those two. There's going to be another pickup in the fall, or you can call for a personal pickup. I think you get two a year. So, but please, if you, trash hasn't, you get six a year?
Six.
Oh, six, wow. So there's no need to put, just put the trash out on the curb. So please, make sure you adhere to the rules, and good luck to everyone who's going to participate in the egg hunt on the 30th, on Saturday the 30th. That is, if you've never been down there, it is a madhouse of kids running around scrambling for some plastic eggs, and it goes fast, but please join the festivities on September 30th.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Bruce. Mayor Pretzheim Pimentel.
Mr. Mayor, we had a sort of a difficult conversation about the 710 project that will affect people here who use the highways going east in their commutes based on failure to improve for truck traffic. I'll brief that somewhat more at the next meeting because I think that we're going to have a follow-up on that in transportation. The next transportation meeting is going to be a bit of a heavy one because we will be looking at underperforming or languishing capital programs in the region for transit, some of which are remarkably expensive and long-living. And then sanitation goes tomorrow, county sanitation, personnel stuff goes the following week, so I'll have more reports in the April, but nothing further.
Thank you. We've got Mayor's Good Friday Breakfast. It's always a fun tradition. Rotary does a great job putting that on, so that'll be on Good Friday. I think it starts at 8:00 a.m. And is it the Rotary, is it the Auto Drive Museum? 7:30? Okay. On Good Friday, that should be good, always is, and you won't have to hear from me. I say like 10 words and then turn it over to a speaker, so it's good from that standpoint, too. I've got an item under my name, which is Item 16, Discussion of Incentives to Support Startup Businesses in El Segundo. I don't really have a lot of information here, other than I'd love to get my colleagues away in and direct staff to look at different incentives to attract people here. I've had a lot of candid conversations. Chris and I have spent a lot of time working with the venture-funded community recently, early-stage entrepreneur ecosystem. I talked to Catherine Boyle, who is a former writer from, with the Washington Post, now a venture capitalist with Anderson Horwitz, very well-regarded, a lot of investments in deep tech here in El Segundo, and she was sharing what works in terms of pulling in together a nucleus of other VCs and startup-backed companies in other areas like Miami, which I've talked about before. Francisco Suarez has done a great job of listening to the startup community and then facilitating conversations. So that's part of it. And I think there's also an opportunity for us to look at incentives. For example, we used to have an incentive for retailers to build new retail boxes, et cetera, and get a year or so of free sales tax. Maybe there's an opportunity for us to look at high-growth, venture-funded companies, light industrial warehouse. I know you, Mr. Allen, have been looking at zoning across the board for the city in terms of how we can accommodate other businesses to the city, but that's really it. I haven't really formulated any ideas more than that, but I'd love staff to look into that so that we can be even more competitive.
Yes, we will follow up on that. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to vote. Carol, did you want to?
No, just on that thought, maybe it's we, even beyond an incentive, maybe create some kind of concierge program, so it's a plug-and-play. So we tap in, we get hotels, we get, you know, just like partner with either the Chamber or the, just like, almost like a program where, you know, if you want to do it, here's a plug-and-play, here's your hotel, like, kind of like, almost like a concierge program, if we could provide them with that. So it's an easy, it's an easy say, hey, El Segundo can plug us in quickly, and there's no...
Yeah, it's actually a lot of what the mayor of Miami was doing was just making introductions of people and making himself available. He would use this coffee with the new startup in town, and here's who moved to Miami and why, and here's what they do. I can tell you that Mr. Allen and his department, because usually one of the first things they come across is, I found a great space, I'm ready to sign a lease, and, uh-oh, there's a problem with the building. And you've been really helpful with your staff to overcome those obstacles, because that's one of the first things that they encounter. They're so focused on running their business, getting their business off the ground, they don't really think about the facilities themselves. So thank you for that. I think we have to vote on this, so I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to develop an incentive program to support startup businesses in El Segundo.
And then they'll bring it back, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, just something to look at down the line.
Sure.
I'll second that.
Okay, Allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, five zero, that's great, thank you. City Attorney reports.
Nothing this evening, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. I also have nothing else this evening, thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.